Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my fellow board members, respective town staff, all of you who are participating through Zoom or watching on TV or Facebook Live. This is the May 4th Town of Exeter Select Board meeting. We're going to continue to recognize the recommendations made by federal, state, and local officials that we keep gatherings under 10 people. And as such, I'm invoking RSA 91A:23B. The Select Board meeting will be conducted without a quorum of this body physically present in the same location. As such, we continue to welcome the public. We will have public comment. And obviously during the course of the meeting, if there's additional time in which public comment is appropriate, we will continue to do so. We do ask that the public continue to conduct themselves in a manner of decorum that would apply if we were in the NOVAC room. All votes tonight will be taken via roll call and will be conducted by the Clerk of the Select Board, Select Woman Gilman. I'm going to introduce the Select Board right now. And when I do, if you would just state whether or not you are alone in the room. I'll start myself. I'm Nico Papakos and Dees, and I am alone in my living room. Select Woman Roundtree Olaf, good evening.
I'm alone. I'm alone.
Hi. Select Woman Gilman.
I am at home and I'm alone.
Okay. Vice Chair Woman Cowan.
Hi, everybody. I am in my kitchen and I am alone.
Terrific. Okay, as I said, we do have a full agenda tonight, so we'll get started. First item, we have two interviews that the Board will be conducting. One is for the Communications Committee and the other for the Conservation Commission. Do we know if we have Nina Braun and Kristin Osterwood on?
I do not see them attending. You have Dawn Jelly, Jim Breely, Mac, Martha, and Natasha Stopp.
Okay.
If one of you, if that's one of you, you can raise your hand or you can rename yourself. Okay, so we do have somebody's hand raised here.
Okay, if we can identify Bob and if it's either Nina or Kristin.
So I'm gonna allow you to talk and you can state who you are.
Hi, my name's Dawn Jelly and I'm here with my husband Eric Downer.
Good evening, Dawn. We will get to public comment in just a moment. We're looking to see if our two Board interviewees are present. And it doesn't look like they are. We'll give it one more second. All right, Bob, we'll move on to public comment. If either Nina or Kristin come on, we can interview them at the end of the meeting. But I would like to move on to public comment. And before we open up to the public, again, the same rules apply as if we were live in the NOVAC room. If you would, please state your name and your address and we'll be happy to listen to your comment. If your comment is relative to something that's on the agenda, though, we do ask that you wait until it comes up later on in the agenda. Comment about something that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak to the Board. So I'll open it up now to public comment.
So again, if you want to speak in here in a minute, you can use that raise hand button that you guys see if you open the participant tab and then you can let the chair know that you want to speak to be recognized.
I see Dawn's hand is raised.
Okay. Dawn, good evening.
Good evening. My comment was regarding my correspondence and I believe that would be in 8E. So you'd prefer me to wait till that section to do my comment, is that correct?
You know what, Dawn? I will excuse that this time because it is in the correspondence and it's the absolute last thing we're going to read at the end of the meeting. I'll allow you to have your comment now because again, we don't read the correspondence. We just make reference that we received it. So if you'd like to take an opportunity quickly to elaborate on that, please do so.
Okay. Thank you. On behalf of my husband and myself, we thank you for the opportunity to comment on this meeting. So my letter to the members of the Select Committee, which I will read out, is, "My husband and I write to ask that you consider amending the Town Ordinance, Chapter 910 C, prohibition in parks and commons, and specifically Gilman Park, to restrict but allow dogs in certain areas of Gilman Park. A hundred and twenty-eight years ago, Daniel and Minnie Gilman gifted the park and their wish for the park was to be to kept forever for the enjoyment of the people of Exeter." (inaudible) The easement reads, "The grantor shall not designate the property or any portion of the property primarily for the benefit of enjoyment by and use of dogs. In support of the easement, we're not proposing that the park be primarily for dogs, but they be allowed leashed and restricted to the trails on the access road and the boat ramp. In all other areas, dogs would continue to be prohibited. We understand the concern about some residents failing to pick up their dog waste, but by restricting dogs to the trails and having dog waste stations, we believe that we can limit this impact significantly whilst in support of the original gift being for the enjoyment of the people of Exeter. We thank you for your consideration."
Thank you, Dawn, and thank you for commenting tonight. We will take this up at a future Select Board meeting, quite possibly the next one, which is scheduled for May 18th. Obviously, if the Select Board were to consider amending a town ordinance, that would require public hearings. But at this time, I've asked the Town Manager to reach out to various department heads and also do some due diligence to do some further background information for us. And so I would anticipate within the next two Select Board meetings, we'll be taking this up on the agenda. And obviously, we'd invite you to come back at that time to join in on our conversation.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment tonight?
Mac has his hand raised, it looked like, for a second.
Okay. Bob, would you open that up for us?
Something too.
Okay.
There we go, they should be able to talk.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
All right, I'm Joanna Pelleran. I'm one of the last group of trustees for Gilman Park before we gave it over to the town. And just for people's general understanding of what happened, I think you should know that we were in touch with the Board of Selectmen at one time in 1996 because we discovered signs in the park that said, "No dogs allowed." And it was our belief as owners of the park, which we were, that we could permit the dogs to be there on a leash. We didn't expect them to jump the fence into the ballpark, but people liked to walk on the paths and trails in the park. Somehow or other, that mushroomed into a large controversy and question as to who owned the park, which of course was straightened out by Charlie Tucker, who sent a letter to the Select Board at that time. Actually, his letter came in in January of 1997. And our letter is to the Select Board in November. He explained that the town had no jurisdiction over the park, that it was the trustees who were owners in perpetuity from the gift of Daniel Gilman. And so I remember as Chair of the Trustees, I sent a letter to the then Select Board of 1996 asking them to remove this part of the ordinance, the dog ordinance, 910 Sub-C. The sad thing is that that never happened because this controversy blossomed over who owned the park. And that's why Charlie Tucker stepped in, sent a letter recommending or telling them that the trustees did indeed own the park. And I, as Chair, thought that was the end of that. And of course, it wasn't evidently. And I can't tell you, it hasn't been researched long enough. I asked Rustine if he could look into this, as to whether it ever was changed. I'm thinking it never got changed. It got left on there, which leads to our predicament now. So I can tell whoever's listening that the trustees of the time in 1996 wished that part to be for dog owners to walk their dogs on a leash because it's beautiful trails and views of the river. And if I've helped to give people more information, I hope that's true. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. And again, we'll be bringing that up in the next meeting or two, and that will be on the agenda. We'd welcome you back and hope that you would join us in that conversation.
(inaudible)
Okay.
If I've helped to give people more information, I hope that's true. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands up. So we'll give a last call for public comment. Okay, great. Thank you both for your comments this evening. Next up, we have Proclamations and Recognizations. And we do have a proclamation to be read this evening, and I'll turn that over to our Clerk, Select Woman Gilman.
Okay, I have to wait till I scroll back up to the top.
Okay.
Went too far. Sorry, folks. Okay, here we go. This is a proclamation for National Public Works Week, May 17th through the 23rd of 2020. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire. And whereas, these infrastructure facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizen, civic leaders, and children in Exeter, New Hampshire, to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Vietnam. Resolved, we, the Select Board of Exeter, New Hampshire, do hereby designate the week of May 17th through 25th, 2020, as National Public Works Week. We urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in acknowledging our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and the employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, we have heron to set our hand and cause the seal of the Town of Exeter to be fixed, done at the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, on this fourth day of May 2020.
Thank you, Julie. Russ, I think we have Jennifer on with us tonight, don't we? Jennifer Perry?
Yes.
Our Public Works Director. Jennifer, on behalf of the Select Board, thank you to you and the Department for all of the work that you do, particularly during these troubled times and during this crisis. The work you do to keep the infrastructure of our town going and the safety and the health and the wellness just goes beyond words, and we appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you very much. I will pass that on to all of the staff. They really appreciate that recognition.
Thank you again, Jennifer. Okay, next, we have a recognition. And I'm going to read an email that was sent to us earlier. But anyway, our own Bob Hall was recognized as a Down Easter Ambassador recently. And I would like to read what was written about Bob by Natalie Allen Bogart. "Bob Hall has been an ambassador for the Amtrak Down Easter Service since its inception. As a longtime rail advocate, Bob became attending Train Riders New England meetings in 1989 as he long wished for the return of passenger rail service to this town. Seeing the inaugural train arrive in Exeter in 2001 was by far the best memory I have of Down Easter. To this day, Bob remains an active member of this advocacy group that started it all, where he currently serves as Vice President for the organization. Along with being a lifelong rail fan, Bob is a retired special education teacher and has a passion for his community and its rich history." Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob, and we wanted to recognize you formally tonight during our Select Board meeting. It's always nice to have some good news to start the meeting and be able to recognize members of our community that do so much for us. Okay, next up, we have the approval of the minutes from our April 27th, 2020 meeting. At this time, I'll ask the Board if there are any revisions or amendments. And if none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I have moved to approve the minutes of whatever date.
April 27th, 2020.
April 27th, 2020, as presented.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And Clerk says aye. Is Selectman Brown aboard yet? No. So the vote is 4-0.
4-0, okay. And Joanna, just for the record, that was Select Woman Gilman that made the motion and Select Woman Cowan seconded.
And sorry, everybody, for a moment, I have a new puppy at home who is very bitey, but he's in his crate now. So he won't be interrupting us.
Okay, we don't have any appointments tonight. Although I do want to clarify, there was some confusion last week on the Conservation Commission term of Donald Clement as an alternate, and his term expires next year, not this year. So Don will have another year at least as an alternate on the Board. Next, we'll go into our discussion in our action items. The first is relative to the bids that we opened and announced last week. Since that time, the Public Works, Jennifer Perry and Matt Barubi, were able to work with our consultants, the Wright Pierce Engineers. And they have a recommendation for us this evening. Jennifer, I'll turn that over to you to just tell us what recommendation is. And then after questions from the Board, we'll entertain a motion to authorize moving forward with this.
Very good. Our recommendation is to award this bid for the wastewater treatment plant, Lagoon Number One Sludge Removal, to Synagro Northeast LLC of Baltimore, Maryland. They are the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Their bid amount was for $630,053. And the next lowest bid was $718,990. So it is in a reasonable range. It's a good number. We did have some preliminary estimates of how much this would cost, and this is right in the ballpark. So we were very happy to see these results. We have, Wright Pierce did do a thorough vetting of their references. They do this kind of work. This is right up their line of experience. They do have the capital to be able to do this work. And of interest to us is that they are capable of mobilizing relatively quickly to do this work. One of the things that needs to happen is this work needs to be conducted over the next several months so that it can be completed in August, early September, and that all of the financials can basically be rolled into the previously awarded contracts, Contracts 1, 2, and 3, for the wastewater treatment plant, the Forest Manes, and the main pumping station. And this will be all part of that one financial package.
Jennifer, has the town ever worked with this company before?
Not to my knowledge. I've heard of them, but we have never worked with them.
Okay. And it looks like Wright Pierce did some background and taught to other towns that have used them prior to, and got decent referrals, if not good referrals?
Yes, they did get good references.
All right. Opening it up to the Board, any questions, Lovey?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I know that, you know, times are a little different than they normally are in terms of the kind of work that can be done. Are there any stipulations, caveats? If we're approaching the beginning of the project and they're having difficulty getting it kicked off, do we have some flexibility in moving on to another contract? Like, what's the game plan in case there are any issues with?
That's a good question.
You know, what they can do for us if things aren't looking great on their end?
So one of the documents that we use, we use what's called Engineering Joint Standard Contract Documents. And there's, in the Notice of Award, there is a timeline requirement. And if they can't meet that, that's exactly what we are allowed to do, is to move on to the next. So thank you for that question.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you, Lovey. Any other questions from the Board? Okay, seeing none at this time, I will entertain a motion which will include approving Synagro Northeast for the work in the amount of $630,053 for the removal of the sludge from the wastewater treatment facility, Lagoon Number One. And also, I'm sorry, do we also, Julie, thank you, is it also to authorize, Mr. Dean?
Yes, we'll do that.
Okay.
Or Ms. Perry. I move to approve the wastewater treatment facility contract for Lagoon One Sludge Removal to Synagro Northeast LLC of Baltimore, Maryland, at a low bid price of $630,053, and to designate Town Manager Rustine to sign any and all required documents.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And Clerk says aye.
4-0?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have, the next item is a public hearing for RSA 79E application by the Pearpoint Group LLC, 23 Water Street. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Select Woman Roundtree Olaf and seconded by Select Woman Gilman. Madam Clerk?
Select Woman Cowan.
Yes.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And Clerk says aye. So it's 4-0.
4-0, the public hearing is open. Do we have Mr. Winham available? I know the applicant is here.
He just needs to unmute.
Yep. Where are you, Darren?
He's there. Oh, there you are.
I hit it like six times, I don't know. This is gonna be awkward because I want to, if you want me to start it off, Mr. Chair?
Please do.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the memo. I think that's just so the public can understand what we're doing. And to do that, I'm gonna have to get rid of this screen and read. Okay, so Pearpoint Group LLC, owner of 23 Water Street, is requesting from the Town of Exeter, consideration for the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive, RSA 79E. And closed, well, let me see that. "Application was received complete by April 28th, 2020. According to the application process outlined in the Town website, the Economic Development Department receives the application for review. Upon review, the application appears complete, as it details the cost of rehabilitation, which tolls $2,174,503, which meets the 15% of the assessed valuation requirement set forth in Section 2, as the current law is valued at $237,600." So currently, it's valued at $237,600. The rehabilitation cost is $2.174 million. Application outlines the public benefits the applicant feels are achieved, which I'll let them discuss if they want. So the procedure by the Board is, the Select would hold a public hearing, you're doing that now. After the hearing, the Select determines if one or more of the public benefits listed in Section 7 have been met. If the Select determined that one or more of the public benefits have been met, then they must decide the period of tax relief to be granted. In this case, it could be anywhere between 1 and 11 years. That begins when substantial rehabilitation is complete. If the tax relief is granted, the Select should determine the length of the covenant to protect the public benefits identified. At a minimum, the covenant needs to run as long as the tax relief period, but it can be increased up to twice the length. Now, we've done two so far, and we did just that amount. The seven years for Mr. Cowan Drelllo and the nine years for Mr. Kader. The covenant should be reviewed by our legal counsel at the applicant's expense. So I would recommend that any motion to grant tax relief includes this requirement, and that's exactly what we did with the last two and only two that we have done. I am all set. You guys have any questions or you want to move on to the other folks? Uh-oh. Am I talking to myself?
We all hear you.
Oh, good. So I just lost.
We just don't have any questions. It was that good.
I lost, I can't see anybody right now.
And I think, I don't know if Darren mentioned it, but I believe you have 45 days from the date of the hearing to figure out the particulars with respect to the granting of any relief period.
How many days from the date of the hearing? Sorry.
I believe it's 45 days.
That's right. Of course, you know, obviously because of what's going on with COVID and just construction, obviously Elliot will let him say it, but I'm sure he's itching to get started.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just, I bring that up just in the event that there are any unanswered questions after hearing the application, just to let the Board know that you have, if you remember the other two applications we did on this, we draw up a covenant and we would bring that to you to approve.
Any other questions for Mr. Winham before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
Sorry, I was on mute. And maybe Elliot will be better to speak to this, but I would just love a description of the project for, just to make sure that everybody knows what we're talking about here.
Go ahead, Elliot.
I know he's here.
He's got the project behind him. He's got a rendering of it.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Elliot, can you not, are you not speaking or are you?
I can hear you. Would you like me to speak?
Please.
Can you tell us about the project?
I can hear, I can see.
We can hear you.
Elliot, they've asked you to describe the project, the bricks and mortar.
All right, I have appeared before the planning board with the board and the initial plans. Initial plan is for a four-story with one story. Initial plan is for a four-story with one story below four to six residential units and two retail units. If there's a worst spot in Exeter trying to build a building, I haven't found it yet. This is gonna be quite a challenge with the river behind us, two buildings on either side, right on the road. So that's the initial plan is for an eight-unit building.
And how much of that will be residential and how much will be retail, Elliot?
Retail is two, two street level and six residential, four up and two down. There's a little bit of a question about that, and I would hope that we would be able to do that. We've already been, I've been granted a, an easement to build the building on the property line. The ordinance calls for whatever the building next door is, which I happen to own, which is 11 Water Street. That's 6.8 feet from the property line, so the new building would have had to be 6.8 feet from the property line. But I got a variance to build it right on the property line, and we have enough room between two buildings to do that. So that was last year.
And how much of any of this housing would be affordable?
How much of it would be affordable?
Yes.
If that's what the question is, Nico, I cannot do affordable housing in this particular
Okay.
building. It's just too expensive to build. But I will be, I will be doing that elsewhere in town with another project I have coming up.
Okay, good. Members of the board, any, any questions or comments for Elliot?
Not at this time.
Okay. Julie? Okay, Molly?
I was, I was, oh, I was on mute, I was muted, sorry. Unmuted or muted? No, I don't, I think that this, this has gone through the Historic District Commission, and we find the design itself appropriate for the space that it's in. I think it's great to have that space filled in. I do have concerns about the four years for the historic district eligibility, but the rest of it, I think, is, is gonna be great for the community.
Molly? Well, I mean, I'll put this back out to the board. From what we've reviewed in our packet over the weekend and what Elliot has, has reported to us tonight. I mean, I think that it meets the criteria under 79E, Section 7, for at least one of them, if not more. Is the rest of the board in agreement?
I am. I am as well, and I also think it's going to be a huge service to have that
Absolutely.
That missing tooth filled in. That'll be great.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I think it meets a couple of the different public benefits listed in the RSA. I think it will encourage the economic vitality of the downtown in that it promotes the development of the municipal center, its efficiency and safety, and greater sense of community. And it does increase residential housing in an urban center. So I think it meets at least those three criteria.
I agree. Okay, well, understanding that we have up to 45 days to review this, but also recognizing, you know, where we're at during this pandemic, and I'm sure Elliot is excited to move, is the board, does the board have an appetite to take a vote tonight? I would be willing to move forward if, go ahead, Julie.
Is one public meeting enough, public hearing?
I believe that's what I read.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement to vote tonight.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, I will open it up to the public at this time if there's any comment or question. Now would be the time, but first I need a motion to open it up to the public. Do I not, Julie?
Mr. Chair, I move to open this public hearing.
Second.
Okay, I will take the roll. Select Woman Callen.
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And the clerk says aye.
I was trying to get you out of an extra roll call, Julie, I'm sorry. Is there any comment from the public? Just wait one more second is where this is a Zoom. I, I don't see any. Am I missing anybody?
Someone from the public wanted to speak. Eileen, I believe I should be able to.
Okay, please, please allow.
So you should be able to, you should be able to speak now, Eileen?
Good evening.
I heard something for a second.
Can we ask her to call in?
Yeah, Eileen, if you're trying to talk and having some issue with whatever device you're on, you can find the number is listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting if you want to call, call in on a phone, or you can go on the bottom of your screen near the audio button and connect to phone audio that way.
Bob, I'd like to allow Eileen time to, to call back in because once we close it to the public comment, we close it, so.
Yeah. I hear some background noise in there. I don't know if that's coming from her microphone or not.
Julie, do you have your hand up?
I did, but I think that I got to say what I wanted to say. One of the things that we need to do here is specify the number of years that, that the covenant or the tax relief will be enabled for.
I do have a question about that. How long do our usual covenants with the tax exemptions go for? And maybe this is, this is a Darren question or a Russ question.
Well, we gave, so the first one we did was for Steve Cane. And that was a large project, as we know, but it wasn't as large as Elliot's, at least his 79E portion. He had already put a lot of money into it, hadn't applied, and didn't realize it was not retroactive. So the second wave, if you recall, before the sea dog moved in, it was gonna be more of a residential-type property, still gonna be like a pub, but more residences on top. And he had spent the money and sort of built it out to some degree. And then he did the 79E, landed sea dog, and that's when he spent the, I think it was 1.1 million, if I recall, if I recall. So he got nine years, and Tony Callendrell for Wine Bar, you know, for the size of the place, a big, a sizable amount of money, but not near as much as what we're talking about now, and he got seven years. Yeah, those are the only two we've done. We had another one, but we decided not to go that route.
Bob, have we found Eileen yet?
I don't see her. I just emailed her the phone number as well, so that she will have that.
Julie, your hands back up.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify what we're voting on as far as the years go for the public to understand. We can grant a tax assessment relief for a period of up to five years, beginning with the completion of the substantial rehabilitation. So once, once Elliot's work is done, then we go, excuse me, a five-year relief or really for the next five years. And then we can add an additional two years of tax relief for the adding residential units. We don't include affordable housing, so we can't go up to four years there. And then it's possible to add another four years for using an historic structure. And I will tell you that I object to that part of the application because I don't think it meets the requirements. The original building burned in the 80s. It was not individually listed as a significant historic resource. The district itself was surveyed, and the building that was there was included in the survey, but was not individually pointed out as a particular interest. And if we wanted to have that building listed on the Secretary of Interior, the National Register, it would have had to have an individual survey, which it did not.
My only recommendation to you right now is, once you get through the public hearing, if you're inclined to vote relief, I think if you remember, one of the applications was at least the granting of the relief and the reasons therefor, and then the board decided on the number of years, I think, in a separate motion. So that's just to, if you do want to vote, want to vote tonight, just to make sure that you outline those benefits that you identify as the public benefits of this in the motion.
Okay. Good suggestion.
Julie cited, cited them very well, so.
Julie, I think you just got set up to make the motion. Any activity, Bob?
Not that I see. Eileen, if you're still in the call, you could raise your hand again if you want to give it another go. Oh, I do see a phone number in here, so. Eileen, if that's you on the phone, you should be able to hit star nine on the phone to raise your hand. There we go. So it looks like it's her, so I'll allow her to talk then.
Okay. Hi, Eileen.
Okay, hi, everybody.
Good evening.
This is a challenge. My question for this project.
Excuse me, Eileen, just for the record, could we have your full name and your address, please?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Also, Eileen, could you mute your sound on your computer? Because it's feeding back into your phone there.
Okay, let me see if I can get back to the meeting and mute that.
You call into a radio station and you're still listening.
Oh, right, right. There's a time delay. No, don't do that. All right, hold on. Oh, this is above my pay grade, guys.
Take your time.
On mute. Please click Zoom meetings. No.
You could just.
You can just close your computer.
Just close it?
Yeah, close your computer and just stay on the phone.
Okay. Did that work?
Not yet.
Still getting? No, I'm still on. I'm shutting everything down. Is that any better?
It makes it like a galactic experience. It's quite.
I wanted to provide you all with some comic relief.
You did a great job.
If, if I, is it getting any better? No, we're getting closer. Oh, crap, what is this little blue camera thing? Oh, man.
I would just, Eileen, if you could, just press the leave meeting.
Oh, wait a minute. I think I might, do you want to leave? Do I want to leave the meeting?
Uh, yeah, just click that.
No? I think I just left the meeting.
Yes, you did it.
Okay.
Okay. I want to talk to you guys later. This could get complicated. I, I think for this project or for any other project, and especially because this is a public hearing that's not feeling very public, knowing that here's another project that will have no facility for any kind of workforce housing, what I wanted to know was what is the expected cost for the residential spaces in this building? And that may be several years down the road, but I'm sure somebody must have a general feel for that.
I think if the applicant's still on, maybe he would be best to answer that.
What was the question, Nico?
The, the, as I understood it, the cost of each unit on the residential part or ballpark?
All we have is initial, we haven't gone into specifics, but the minimum of $250,000 a unit.
Okay. Eileen, did you hear that?
Yeah, so these would be what, one-bedroom units? What are we talking about in terms of size?
Three one-bedroom and three two-bedroom.
Okay. So that's not without, beyond the realm of something that somebody could afford downtown. Okay, I'm, I was just curious. I'd like to speak to the MUN stuff when you get to that. So I'll just sort of stay on the line till you get there, because I don't want to jump into the Zoom meeting and screw you up again.
Eileen, I can work with you offline to hook up your audio better.
Okay.
And Eileen, one more time, I'm sorry, if we could just get your full name and, and address for the record.
Yeah. Eileen Flockhart, 7 Jack's Court, Exeter.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Julie, do we need a motion to close the public comment, or can we just bring it back to the board?
We need a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to close the public hearing on the 79E tax relief application for 23 Water Street.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Select Woman Gilman, seconded by Select Woman Roundtree Olaf. Madam Clerk?
Select Woman Callen.
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
The clerk says aye.
Four zero? Any further discussion amongst the board about this application? Any other questions for Elliot?
I do. What is the expected timeline of this project?
Expected what?
What is the expected timeline for the completion of the project?
From when we start, it will be finished in under 12 months.
Okay.
Okay. Is the board ready to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Chair, I'm ready, but I need to scroll down through several pages to complete the motion. Let's see. I move to approve the Town of Exeter Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive, also known as RSA 79E, for 23 Water Street Ownership Pearpoint Group LLC for the public, public.
Is that it?
No, no. I have to finish the official language, as I said, have patience while I scroll down. Let's see. For the public key benefit of, one, it enhances the economic vitality of the downtown, three, that it promotes the development of municipal centers, providing for the efficiency, safety, and a greater sense of community, consistent with RSA 9B, and four, it increases the residential housing in an urban or town center.
If there is nothing further, I would like to second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Select Woman Gilman and seconded. Okay, we have a motion, uh, from Select Woman Gilman, and seconded by Select Woman Roundtree Olaf. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And the clerk says aye. So then the next discussion is how many years?
How many years? The application, um, was for eleven years, eleven years they were seeking. I would be inclined to throw a number out of nine for discussion.
Darren, did you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
I, I do, but I don't know if it's appropriate, cause right now you're talking as a counsel. I didn't know if I could offer or I should wait.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you can, because you were asked to speak, Darren, I think it's fine for you to speak.
I just wanted to, uh, I, I just, because I've, I've looked at this thing a couple of different ways in terms of, I apologize, I'm not looking at, right now I'm looking at the actual RSA. And what it says is, the governing body made a discretion add up to an additional four years of tax relief for the substantial rehabilitation of, oh, trying to find, yeah, here you go. Uh, qualifying structure is listed on or determined eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places, State Register of Historic Places, or is located within and important to a locally designated historic district. So, I guess y- you could say that it's in that district, and so maybe consider some of that four years, just throwing it out there. With some inclined.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I understand that, and I, uh, would love to apply the whole thing to this, um, application, but that, uh, section of the, of the RSA refers to a qualifying structure, and I argue that there is no qualifying structure. This RSA designates, uh, anything that has been destroyed, um, within fifteen years prior to the adoption of this RSA. And we adopted it long, not long ago. So I, I would not be interested, I'm not interested in, uh...
Okay.
Applying the four years.
I, I see your point. I mean, I was looking at it from the other point that, that, you know, the structure is not there, uh, there is no structure. Um, you know, granted, it was destroyed, um, albeit, I think, destroyed before the applicant owned the building, uh, and I was willing to, I was looking at it as we could maybe go halfway there, but your point is well taken.
Well, and if you look at the application, Mr. Chair, the building name is described as NA, it's not applicable because there's no building, and it says vacant lot. And so if it's, if, if the application is for a vacant lot, I can't consider it an application for an historic structure.
Your point is well taken. Any other comment from the board? Molly, Lovey?
Um, so then, what would, what would the total, um, what would the total time be then, Julie, that you're advocating? Seven years?
Yes, I would advocate for the five years for the project itself, and the two years for, for providing, uh, residential, uh, space.
And again, just so that I'm clear, when I, when I threw out the figure of nine, I was looking at the fact that there wasn't a structure there, and I was looking to go halfway, but, but, um, Select Woman Gilman, I mean, you, you bring up, you bring up a good point.
And please understand, it's not that I don't like the structure, I just don't want to see this become, uh, well, there's not a lot of holes in downtown.
No, really.
Uh, if we have another one of these kind of districts designated for our seventy-nine E, I would like to have it be, uh, not have this be used as an example of why another, um, another project should get four years also.
No, that's well said, and, and, you know, we don't like to set precedent that way. Before we entertain a motion, Lovey, did you have any, any other comment or question? Okay.
Nothing further.
Julie, would you like to make the motion?
Excuse me, yes. I move to approve a Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive, uh, RSA ninety, seventy-nine E, uh, for twenty-three Water Street, uh, and Pearpoint Group LLC for a term of seven years for, uh, qualifying, for a qualifying property, and, uh, two years for adding residential
Remotion, is there a second?
Okay.
Remotion by Select Woman Gilman, seconded by Select Woman Cowan. Madam Clerk, for a roll call.
Select Woman Cowan.
Yes.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Clerk says aye.
Pass is four-zero.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
Was that a total of nine years or a total of seven years?
Seven years. Um, we now need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion in the second, uh, Madam Clerk.
I actually think we already did this, but, uh, uh, Select Woman Cowan.
Yes.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And the clerk says aye.
And my apologies, I thought we were closing public comment earlier. So, moving on, uh, Mr., is Mr. Sharples ready for presentation on the Mixed Use Neighborhood Development Program?
Yes, I am. Can everyone see and hear me?
Yes, Dave, good evening.
Good evening. All right, thank you for the invite and the opportunity to present the, uh, recently adopted zoning amendment. And you all have my memorandum and enclosures in the packet. There was, uh, I provided a memo to Russ and, uh, several enclosures, one including the, the final draft of the MUND, uh, the Mixed Use Neighborhood Development that we'll be talking about tonight. The presentation, like I said, is Mixed Use Neighborhood Development, M-U-N-D, so I will refer to it after as the MUND. Uh, it's, first, I'm just going to provide a brief history. I'm sure, you know, you folks know the history. I've done a couple of brief presentations on this in the past, but it's good to go over the history for those who aren't aware of it. The, both the, a couple of years ago, a few, well, about three years ago, the Housing Advisory Committee, uh, conducted a report of housing in Exeter. Also, the twenty, two thousand eighteen master plan was up, uh, was updated. Well, no, the master plan was updated in two thousand eighteen. And both of those, uh, had goals related to the creation, the need to create affordable housing options in Exeter. And because of this, I pursued a municipal technical assistance grant through Plan New Hampshire for twenty-five thousand dollars, and we were awarded that, and to develop an ordinance that would incentivize the creation of affordable housing. I worked with the Master Plan Oversight Committee, the Planning Board, and the Housing Advisory Committee, and also the general public. We had several public forums, had a survey, got a lot of, as always with Exeter, a lot of engaged citizenry participating and providing their input. And those committees and the general public really played an instrument, instrumental role in the final language of the amendment that is in your packets and got passed, uh, in the recent town warrant. The project had really three overarching goals. One was obviously incentivize the creation of affordable housing. We also wanted to require high-quality urban design standards. We have architectural standards in our site plan and subregs, uh, but they're pretty general in nature and pretty easy to, to adhere to. So we wanted to really, uh, you know, increase those design standards, and, and I'll explain why in, in a little bit. We also wanted to try to create sustainable development in areas where there was already infrastructure, uh, promote the develop, promote, you know, mixed housing options in, in our urban cores, uh, in town, so trying to create sustainable development. So those were the three goals. And as I said, you all have a copy of the MUND, uh, in your packets. I'll hit the highlights. The first thing, very important, is it's optional. It's an optional, uh, amendment. Property owners wishing to develop their property where it's allowed, and we'll get to that in a minute, they can either go under conventional zoning, like follow the regular rules under conventional zoning and not go under the MUND, or they can choose to go under the MUND. So it, it's not required of property developers, but it gives them an option, uh, to pursue. It's applicable in the C-one zoning district and the WC. And the C-one zoning districts in one of the memorandum, the enclosures I included has colored maps showing those areas. One area of the C-one is by the Lincoln Street area, it's around the train station and a little bit on Front Street. The second part of the C-one, a second part of the C-one is basically downtown, but not on the riverside, uh, of Water Street. Between Water Street and the, uh, river is the WC, Waterfront Commercial. And then the C-one is the remaining portion of, of the downtown. And then there's another piece of the C-one district on Lower Portsmouth Ave, at the lights by Exeter Hut Cycles, I think it's Fallon Auto there, those lights at High Street and Portsmouth Ave, up to the lights at Walgreens, and just the properties that front on Portsmouth Ave between those lights. So any property in those areas can take advantage if they choose to, uh, to go under this ordinance. And as the name suggests, it has to be a mixed-use development. It can't be a strictly residential, uh, it also can't be strictly commercial. I, I think that would likely wouldn't happen in, in that area, because upper floors, uh, in, in most places, and expect, you know, in, in a place like Exeter, would support, wouldn't really support that much commercial, and, you know, the third and fourth, uh, story, that would, that would be residential anyway. So it has to be a mixed use. So how does it incentivize the creation of affordable housing? Cause that's what we struggle with. We wanted to create an ordinance that developers would want to take advantage of. We have an ordinance, uh, in place under our subdivision regs of the Conservation Open Space Development, where developers can choose, when they do a open space design development, they can choose to take advantage of an affordable density bonus. Uh, we've had it on the books for well over, uh, twenty years, and we've had one development take advantage of it. That was the Watson Woods, uh, development, uh, in the early two thousands. So, a long time ago, it just, and we talked to developers, we said, well, why don't you take advantage of, of the, uh, bonus? It just didn't work financially. So we wanted to create an ordinance that was attractive, uh, to people that would take advantage of it and create affordable housing. So what we did to provide incentives is we, there's, before I say, what, a little description, there's basically three main limiting factors, uh, to the, to density, like how, how much you can get. It's straight density requirement, like how many units per acre. A lot of people know, like, you know, you look at zoning in the C-one, you get every, you know, thirty-five hundred square feet of, of lot area per unit, and it's a mathematical equation, and it, and it spits out the maximum density or number of units you can get on the property. Another minimum factor, limiting factor, is parking. Cause sometimes when you do the math, a parcel may support ten units by the density requirements, but you can't provide the parking for ten units, so it's eight units. So you, you, you don't bump up to the maximum. Parking is the limiting factor. Or the third limiting factor is height. So even if you can park it all and put that many units, you can only build so high. So that's the limiting factor. So there's really three limiting factors, and it depends on certain properties, uh, you're going to bump up into one of them before you bump into the other one. So I've always maintained that really, you know, a lot of places, you only, if you have one limiting factor, that's pretty much good enough, cause it, it dictates the other two, uh, in, in, in an urban setting, a little different in, you know, in, in more rural areas. But, so we, what we did was we removed the density requirement. We said, you know, no, no more density requirement, um, that's not, that's removed as a limiting factor. Uh, we reduced the parking requirements, so, so specifically fifty percent of the parking requirements in the zoning ordinance for proposed commercial is reduced in the MUND. So if a commercial use requires ten unit, uh, ten parking stalls under the MUND, it requires five. And then, instead of the zoning ordinance where it requires a number of stalls based on bedrooms, like a one-bedroom requires, uh, one parking stall, a two-bedroom requires two, two parking stalls and so forth, this requires just one space per unit regardless of the size of the unit. So you just have to have one. But what more importantly it does, it allows the planning board the flexibility to determine what that parking requirement is, and reduce that parking requirement anywhere, you know, from what's required down to zero if it's in a place where there's just no parking available. Uh, the earlier application, uh, I, I would argue that there is no parking on that site that can be provided. It does, it does have some criteria for the planning board to do that. They have to prove that there is, uh, safe and accessible parking, uh, somewhere near the development, but it doesn't have to be on-site. It also slightly increases the height in the downtown, uh, C-one and WC from thirty-five feet or three stories to fifty feet and four stories. So that is a change. It's, instead of a three-story building, they could go up to four stories on the MUND. And the thirty, and the thirty-five feet in the Lincoln Street area, after quite a bit of public input, uh, the Lincoln Street area did not want to go from thirty-five to fifty feet. They felt that the massing, the character, the scale, we listened to the public, you know, we heard the public overwhelmingly on that, so we decided to keep the Lincoln Street area, C-one, maximum height at thirty-five feet, three stories, as it is today, so there was no change in that. So that, those are the incentives we provided to a developer, a property owner that's looking to develop these properties. So what, in exchange, what do we get for those incentives? Like, we're providing those incentives, what are we going to get, basically, you know, in exchange? Uh, so the ordinance requires that a minimum of ten percent of the units are affordable in proper, in perpetuity. And we decided on ten percent, because there, there was a lot of internal discussion right
Uh-oh.
It's like my loss. I froze up.
It never freezes when you have like a good look on your face, you know? You smiling with the sun shining.
How many theme music we can play?
We do, we do need like a band that plays in when these kinds of things happen. Oh, poor Dave.
And he was getting to the good part.
I know. I almost feel obligated to keep talking so that his face doesn't like permanently stay on the Exeter, uh, TV screen.
Don't worry, I, I got some pictures of it. I'll be sending it to him.
If you cross the line, your, your, your horrid Zoom picture will pop up.
Oh, dear.
Hey there.
Are you still showing us in the meeting?
You still hear me?
I can't, yeah.
Dave, Dave, you, you, you froze, you froze, you froze just when you were explaining, uh, the ten percent in perpetuity?
Yeah, you froze when you were talking about the ten percent in perpetuity.
But you can still hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, but we lost you when you were, when you were right getting into the ten percent.
All right, well, my computer screen is frozen. I can't do anything about it, but I'll just keep going because...
We can hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just finish the, uh, my presentation. I don't have much longer, uh, and then I'll, I'll go from there. I'll, I'll try to figure out what's wrong, but let me finish my presentation. Thank you.
Oh, no.
No, I don't know where you...
Russ, if, if you were, if you were able to talk to him, he could just call into the, uh, meeting on the, uh, the number on the agenda and come in as a phone, and I'll, I could let him speak that way, too. Might sound better, too, for the, uh, recording secretary.
I can call his cell if you want me to, Russ.
Yeah, I don't know why you dropped from my phone. It's kind of strange.
Mr. Chair, if I might fill some space while we're waiting for Dave to connect. One of the things that you folks might want to think about while you're listening to this is an area of town that's been developed in a dense kind of fashion because that's what we're trying to get here is to not be sprawling. We want the downtown to be compact and a more regular space. So think about areas like around Lincoln Street where the houses are close together. Or if you ever take a drive up Auburn, not Auburn Street, Prospect Street. And yeah, Auburn Street, where the houses are packed close together and there's very little parking and it's, that's what we're trying to get at with things close to the, close to the street. So when you're walking down, you have something to look at. There's room for trees. You don't just see asphalt all in front of you.
Nico, if you want, I can share something about the Mund that from an econ dev perspective that's happened since we passed it.
Sure, go ahead.
So we have three development projects where we have three different developers that are interested in the Mund. As Dave was putting this together, I was sending it out to all our developers, trying to encourage them, knowing we needed this, you know, we need it badly. And so there are three different properties right now that in one case, by regular zoning, they would get seven units. But I think, I think there's 21 that we can get because of it. So it definitely has been sort of a nice renaissance for developers to start looking at it this way. And trying to get other towns to do it too. Because every town followed our lead on the seacoast, it would really start to have an impact. Yeah, it's a really, really good legislation. And by the way, last thing, I talked to Elliot right after the meeting. He was super happy. So thank you guys so much for that.
So again, when Dave comes back, there's, there's no action to be taken by the board tonight. I had the, the pleasure and privilege of being on the planning, the select board rep to the planning board last year. So I saw this from, you know, the presentations that led up to the deliberations that the planning board had. And it was quite interesting. And I know Dave has come and talked to the select board in the past, but I just thought now with a new board and also for the public to be able to see this from A to Z would just be, be real interesting. So there's no action that the board's going to take tonight. But, you know, Darren, one of the exciting things was because of where, where part of this district is too. I mean, it would encourage, you look, talking about the parking, it would encourage people that may want to come in and live here that live near the train station. They may not need vehicles. So I thought that was, the Lincoln Street aspect was particularly interesting. And I'm glad because there was pretty robust conversation between 35 versus the 50 foot. And the appetite of the neighborhood was certainly to keep it at 35 feet. So at any rate, that, that's the reason for it being on the agenda. And I do know that there are members of the public that will want to ask questions or at least one member of the public. So hopefully we get Dave back.
Hey Dave, if that's you who just called in with a phone and you hit star nine, let us know if that's you and you want to talk. There we go. I think that's Dave, so I'm going to allow him to talk.
All right, that's me again. Sorry, sorry about the technical difficulties.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm trying to get back on to Zoom, but I'll finish the presentation. I was at, what do we get in exchange for those incentives? And I think I mentioned that it requires a minimum of 10% of the units are affordable in perpetuity. So they're going to be deed restricted. They're going to be monitored and it's as long as they're in existence, the units are in existence, they need to provide, you know, they need to maintain their affordability. If there's questions, I'm not going to give in the details of what is affordable, but it's based on the area median incomes through the state's definitions. And for sale, it's someone making 80% of the area median income. It's affordable to someone making 80% of the area median income. And rentals, it's 60% of the area median income or basically the fair market rent that's put out by HUD. And I think we're going to use the Western Rockingham County HUD publication. Also, in addition to the affordable units, we require high quality urban design standards that address critical elements of the site such as site circulation, site design, building design. If you look, if there's a lot of, there's a lot of illustrations in the ordinance that talk about the front of the building, how it connects to the sidewalk and the public space, really sets a good welcoming street edge, encourages sidewalks, pedestrians, high quality entrances, defined entrances. It requires street trees, native street trees. And we already, you know, implemented new stormwater management. So it has to be, you know, has to take care of the stormwater onsite to the extent practical because we are in some somewhat suburban environments and it can be very challenging. So in summary, we, we did have quite a bit of interest in the ordinance prior to its adoption. I've spoken to several property owners about it. I'm also preparing, I think it's a pretty unique ordinance. I'm not aware of when, when the municipal, when Plan New Hampshire read the, read my grant application, called me, they said it was, they loved it. It was, it was by far their, their first choice for funding. And we're, you know, very excited to hear that it passed. And I'm preparing a nomination for the project of the year through the New Hampshire Planners Association. Because I think it's a very unique project. I hope that, that, you know, landowners, the interest continues in it and someone takes advantage of it soon. And we can actually see a project or two get built under, under the new zoning. And if anyone's interested in this for further information, the, it's in our zoning ordinance, it's part of our zoning ordinance. They can look, look, look at the language there on, on our website or get, you know, get a copy from us. And if they have any questions, they can call me, you know, the town planner directly with any questions they may have. And I'd be happy to help them with any, you know, development prospects they have for their property. So with that, I'll, I'll, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone might, the board or the public might have.
David, it's Nico. And that, that 10% remains despite any potential ownership changes, correct?
Correct. It's in perpetuity. It's going to be in the deed. It doesn't, it's, you know, it's, it's a restriction on the property regardless of who owns it.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Oh, Julie, suck that in.
I just like to, I just like to say this is really exciting. I'm glad the voters came forward and had the forethought to bring us this opportunity to bring more affordable housing to town. This is a great tool. And we've found all the problems that we've had as far as, you know, spatialness as Mr. As our town planner said, that we've had the problems with the dimensional regulations and the parking regulations. And this is a good way to work it out and get a plus for us.
Bob, can we open it up to the public? I think, I think Eileen was staying on the line to ask some questions or have comment.
Sure, there you go.
It's not me. Okay. Am I really here?
Hi, Eileen, you're back.
Okay, Eileen Flahcard, Seven Jack's Court. I'm really excited about the potential for the Mund developments and workforce housing and anything besides blacktop and the potential for trees and landscaping is just very exciting. I guess what I have is a specific concern for Mund and maybe a larger concern for, for other things. There are a number of pieces of the Mund that seem to require the oversight of the planning board in the beginning stages and then down the road where it, you know, reports should be submitted to the planning board annually and need to be approved. And it seems to me that we are asking a board of volunteers to oversee a huge amount of work. And if they were not able to oversee or really look at some issues, maybe there was, you know, the, the frontage for a Mund project was not looking the way they hoped it to look. And they determined something wasn't right. What exactly could the repercussion be? What happens, you know, it's similar to when there's a regulation of, you know, a building is going to be 35 feet and all of a sudden it's 40 feet. But where, where are the teeth to apply the regulation? When we set something like this up, you want to know that there are, you know, safeguards along the way. So what you're dreaming of really happens and that nothing, you know, gets short cheated anywhere. And like, oh, we were hoping we were going to get a nice little bank of bushes and trees, but we didn't have room for it. So we still have blacktop or whatever, you know? So my concern was how do we protect what we're looking to do? And who's responsible for monitoring that? And how can the planning board possibly do all the work that we've set out for it to do in this project?
Dave, do you want to answer or do you?
I can, no, I can certainly answer that.
And you're back.
Thanks for the question, I think. I'll go, I'll go kind of backwards. I'll, I'll, I'll answer the last question I think I heard you say first. And what about, like you had mentioned, like what if trees don't get built? Or, you know, it doesn't get built according to plan? Well, that's the first step in the process. And the planning board doesn't oversee that. That's a staff function. I go out, I do site inspections. At the end, I work with Doug Eastman, our building inspector. And we make sure that before the development gets a certificate of occupancy, in order to rent the building and occupy the building, they need what's called a certificate of occupancy through the town. And we will not issue that until they meet all the requirements of the plan and building, build it according to plan. So that's not, we will make sure that, you know, it gets built according to the plan. Or sometimes you'll see they'll go back to the planning board for changes or make changes that are administratively approved as allowed under the site plan regulations. And there's just a few scenarios where, where that could be. So that's the bill part. About monitoring, it says, the ordinance says the planning board or its designee. Because essentially it's the planning board that is in charge of this ordinance. So we always put the planning board. But in this case, the designee has agreed to be New Hampshire Finance Housing, the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. They are going to monitor the properties for us. So they said, they said, as long as you follow the HUD affordabilities and follow their affordability requirements, because you can define affordability however you want at the local level. We used their state definition and they said, if we use that, then they will do the monitoring. And even if the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority wouldn't be the one, it would be staff, not the planning board. I, you know, we'd report to the planning board, but it wouldn't be the planning board. None of the volunteers would have to get involved with monitoring and making sure the units remain affordable. If for some reason there's a compliance issue, we have, it all depends. We have various tools to comply, to make people comply from, through the planning board aspect, through land use citations. I guess it all depends on what avenue you go, depending on the, you know, certain case. It's unlike in a case by case cases. But I can assure you, we do have teeth and options available to us to enforce and make sure they comply with the regulations of the planning. Does that answer?
Yes, and I, I guess maybe you could sort of answer in, in a broader scope that, you know, there've been issues. For instance, I'm thinking of the, the property on Main Street across from the gas station. It's just been completed. That was supposed to be 35 feet and now it's 40 feet, but nobody can do anything about it because it's already built. And does somebody just say, oh, well, we sort of meant for it to be 35 feet, but oh, well, it's 40 and?
Well, that.
Is there any, you know, is there any consequence? Here's my, here's my dream, that if there was an error made and there was a consequence and there was a penalty set aside, that you could put that in a fund to plant trees in town. You could put that in a fund to do something positive. And knowing that there was a penalty, somebody might say, oh, well, we don't want to have to pay a fine. And if they did have to pay a fine, it could do something positive.
Well, on that one in particular, I mean, it's not, it was presented to the planning board, that one for a building permit and height is a zoning requirement. It's not a requirement in the planning board and the site plan and subdivision regulations. So it's, it's more of a code enforcement issue. And I was, I haven't been following it like Doug Eastman has because he's the code enforcement officer. But he contacted the applicant and said that it violated the zoning and they needed to go to the zoning board of adjustment and get relief. And it was my understanding, I think they were going to apply for a waiver from dimensional requirements under the, you know, like that it was an honest mistake. They, but, but that's kind of zoning and it's up to the zoning board. So there is a, that it needs to go through. It's not just, oh, it's built, you know, no problem. That's, that's not what, that's not the process as I understand it.
Yeah. Well, I guess what I'm saying is that here we're, we're looking at the option of potentially three projects that could do some really exciting things in town that we want to have the, the prospect of, of strength of, you know, planning and, you know, protecting it, going well down the road. You know, just like we protect the older buildings in town. And to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row so that we can do that and the responsibility for that is clear.
I think, yeah, I think depending on the situation, it is pretty clear what the enforcement mechanism is and who is the enforcement body or what enforcement options are available to you. If it's under zoning, it's the code enforcement officer through the zoning statutes and enforcement. And if it's under planning and site plan regs, it's a little different. But then there is some overlap. We can use the enforcement procedures set forth in New Hampshire RSA. So I'm pretty confident. And if people, if people don't comply, there, there is methods available to towns. I actually lobbied for one at the state that, that God implemented that we can write several years ago, that we can write land use citations for violations of zoning and planning boards. So I'm, I'm confident that we have the enforcement capability if it comes up. But, you know, 90, 99%, 95% of the developments I deal with, they, they comply and move on and they're a great addition to, to the community.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's our, that's our goal for, for, you know, I'm just looking at playing devil's advocate a little bit to make sure that what we're doing has all the protections we need to have going forward.
At least I think so. I mean, you know, there's always something you can run into, but I'm pretty confident we can, you know, we can, we can gain compliance when we need to.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Did you have any other questions for, for Dave or for the board?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comments tonight.
You're welcome.
Anybody else from the public? And I don't see any other hands.
Hey, mine's up.
You're not the.
My question is for Mr. Sharples. I think what, what Ms. Flahcard was getting at is something that I've seen a lot at zoning boards is trying to get people to come in to ask permission rather than coming in to ask forgiveness. So, you know, thank you for the RSA that deals with getting some kind of land use restriction or whatever it was you said.
Yeah, oh, no, understood. I, I, I mean, if I found, honestly, if I found a way to deal with that one, you know, that, that would be great because you can't be there, you know, every second. And people do things and you catch them. and, and people do things uh, and you catch them at a later date. So, I mean, I, I find most people, you know, want to follow and, and build it to plan. Um, but yeah, there are, you know, whether it's a mistake or, or a planned um, modification, I, I'm not sure what we could, you know, re- retroactively do about that, except send them to the proper boards and approvals uh, that they should have gotten prior to doing uh, what, whatever they undertook.
Dave, historically, since you've been here, how often does that happen?
Oh, I can, I count on one hand. I mean, I, I only know of a couple. Um, you know, sometimes there's a lot of minor issues, uh, not counting the minor issues because, you know, site plans come in and, you know, they, they change, you know, maybe the planting types or something like that on, uh, you know, on a plan and I administratively approve that. So, so that happens quite a bit because, you know, the, the engineers, the architects are in the office and then, and then the site contractor gets out there and he starts digging, runs into things and, and you know, there's changes to the plans, but, but, you know, so those are pretty, you know, common. Uh, but things like height, you know, like it's, it's 35 feet, he gets submitted as 35 feet and they build it at 40. I mean, that's, that's very rare. I, I don't run into that much at all.
And also, would you say it's rare, excuse me, uh, for a mistake to be made, um, you know, clearing an area that shouldn't be cleared or maybe, you know, putting something in that wasn't part of the plan? I mean, I'm just trying to think of my year on the planning board. I think we really only saw that once.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Very rare.
So that's exactly what, I mean, usually they, they know and then a lot of times, I mean, the majority of even those are on mistakes. I mean, I, I think a lot of people, building height, uh, the architect that developed that one, if we're going to talk about that one, uh, a lot of people define building height like to the ridgeline like we do. A lot of places do halfway from the top of the top floor roof to the ridgeline. So the building actually itself can be 40 feet, but the, but it's 35, it meets a 35 foot height requirement because of what you measure the top of the building. Some people just go to the ridgeline, I mean, you know, to, to, to the top of the top floor and then any like towers or something aren't counted in. So, you know, when, when I do see these mistakes there, you know, the, the contractor went out and, you know, they staked out an area and may have cleared it that was staked out and someone made the wrong, you know, surveyed it wrong and added something. So even when they do happen, the majority of them are mistakes.
Okay.
It's been my experience.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dave? Great. And again, there's no action to be taken tonight. I just wanted uh, Dave to have the opportunity to present this and thank you, Dave. That was a very thorough presentation and it's nice to see you. Haven't seen you in a while.
Good seeing you all. Thank you, thank you. It's an exciting project and I hope folks will uh, learn about it and take advantage of it.
Great. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Stay well.
Will.
Okay, with that, we'll move from the discussion and action items to our, I'm sorry, we have one more, uh, the COVID-19 updates. Uh, we have um, several staff members who are going to give us updates. Uh, we will start, we'll go in this order tonight. Uh, Darren's going to give us uh, an update um, on our local businesses, an economic update. Uh, Chief Wilking will give us um, his usual uh, safety update and then Mr. Dean uh, will uh, finalize it with some other updates, both from the state and also some local um, concerns. So with that, Darren, are you prepared uh, for your presentation?
I am, uh, and I apologize. I, I try to keep it as short as I can, but I know and I believe that getting this information out at least one good time to the public is very important. So bear with me while I switch over to a word.
Take your time.
Is to disseminate accurate and timely information to Exeter's businesses to continue as much as possible business as usual, ongoing projects, et cetera, and to track down specific answers to questions businesses have regarding COVID-19 resources. The latter being the most difficult because many of the resources have significant issues. Often federal, regional representatives don't have answers and service providers and businesses are forced to wait for answers. I'll get into this a little more in my presentation. The biggest help I've had is a group of Seacoast economic developers and others that have been meeting monthly for the past three years. Now we're Zooming twice a week to share information, et cetera. Through this group, I have access to SBA field personnel, SBDC Seacoast rep, UNH Cooperative Expansion COVID-19 Response rep, and many others. And I have a very good working relationship with REDC, RPC, and NHBEA. A few weeks into the crisis, the Seacoast group began petitioning as Secretary of State for our regional businesses in good standing lists. We failed for some time, but I was successful, successful going my own route. We have a contact with Molly Cowan, so thank you, Molly. Um, once I got ahold of that guy, it went to his boss, to his boss, to his boss, and then I got an email from uh, the Assistant Secretary of State, Business in Good Standing List, of which is 945. Uh, once I got that list, I created the Town of Exeter in Hampshire COVID-19 Business Outreach Program, which I'll show you in a minute. Included in this is updated information as I get it and often the information is way ahead of it being on any active site. A COVID-19 Federal and State Resources List, which I update as appropriate, and a COVID-19 Business Resource Survey to try and understand who, who is using what programs and issues they're having with town. Because there was so much important info last Friday, Chris Sarette was kind enough to upload the last email to Facebook's Exeter, Exeter full and paid. And I treat Facebook like I treat COVID, it's not welcome in my house. So new things coming out. Our Seacoast group asked the SBA for a simple fact sheet and overview of PPP, the Paycheck Protection Program, so the layman can understand how to appropriately use it. We got that. I received it today and it will go out in the business outreach tomorrow. It's going to be a big help to a lot of companies. A new survey will go out by midweek that asks business specific questions to begin to gauge COVID-19 impact on a local level. Because most of the folks on the Seacoast Econ Dev Group are from Stafford County, I formed a Rockingham Econ Dev Group made up of Tim Roach of RPC, Nancy Carmer, Econ Dev Portsmouth, Laurel Adams of REDC, and Jenny Wheeler of the Exeter Area Chamber. We started a weekly Zoom last week. How are we helping our neighbors? Through the Herculean efforts of our own Bob Milwaukee and my mild contributions, we will be sending emails out to all businesses in Rockingham County except Exeter and Portsmouth. We now have the Quongi SOS list. The original will come from me, but all the ones thereafter will come from Tim Roach of RPC and the responses will go to him. Both Laurel Adams of REDC and I will assist with questions Tim can't answer. The same is being done for Portsmouth. So while the emails appear to businesses as coming from me, the Exeter, Nancy Portsmouth businesses, and all of Rockingham County except Exeter and Portsmouth coming from Tim Roach, they actually are drafted by me, except Nancy, she does her own, and put out by Bob Milwaukee. All of this will allow, allow us to track COVID-19 information at a local and regional level. Vice to say I've been in contact with many, many Exeter businesses and have provided every bit of assistance I can. I'm taking calls nights and weekends and frankly, I'm happy to do it. Sometimes it's minor stuff like Jeff Turner asking to move a town bench to increase his seating capacity to accommodate the rules the governor put out on Friday. And by the way, Jeff's Green Bean will be open for outside seating by the 18th. But it's something much more serious, like an email from Mike Curry of C3I stating he didn't get the first round of PPP and doesn't know how he's going to pay his people. But before I begin my COVID-19 PowerPoint, I just want to let people know that as much as possible, we are staying on top of local projects such as Mr. Monahan's Gateway Project, Ozram's efforts to sell the property they aren't using. Businesses in great standing, they're going to keep going, they actually increased their business, but they'd have the property around them uh, that they want to sell and that's good for us. The Ioka Project, Mr. Cowie's Ioka Project, Prepare Points, 23 Water Street, 790, et cetera. Ongoing as much as possible. So now, if I clean, uh, Bob, can you bring up uh, that's, yes, thanks. Okay, here we go. So you can go to the next one, Bob, if you can. I'm hoping I can actually read it though, because of the screen. So this is our uh, business and employee resources. So this is right on our website and a link to this goes out in all of our emails, all of our response emails. So that's good, Bob. Bob, can you go? Yeah, thanks. Um, I apologize. Let me just see if I can move this because the, the faces are in the way when I want to actually show you something. Oh, good, that's working. Okay. Um, so this is the email that went out on Friday and you can see from here, we're saying, okay, this is what the task force did, a task force is meeting, this is what the governor said, and here's when things are opening, here's the website you need to go to. Can you go to the next page? And we linked, uh, on the left-hand side, we actually linked all of those, and I apologize, I'm moving my, I'm moving the faces back and forth so I can read. Um, like, so we linked every one of those uh, determinations the governor had. And this is the part I want you to read because this is the part that's showing how we're staying on top of it. So this is the information that we're getting out that unfortunately other websites, the SBA sites, the state sites can't go fast enough and get these businesses the answers they need. So I say, I was on a conference call with NH, NHBEA reps on Thursday. I know businesses that have received funding via the Paycheck Protection Program are concerned about compliance, especially utilizing resources for allowable uses, so they're sure they want to pay the loan back. While NHBEA is able to answer many questions, the PPP program rules are still coming out. And so what I've showed here is a link and then pointing out the fact that, that it is the representatives of uh, the SBA that we're able to talk to and they're giving us anecdotal information that we can actually put out that likely other sites can't, but we can do that. Um, also pointing out here on the other side that the funds, because we had a big problem with the first step of PPP and everybody knows where a lot of that funding went and unfortunately, the smaller businesses and particularly businesses didn't have lenders or even good relationships with lenders weren't allowed to get it. They didn't get it, they got passed over. And so the second round, um, we can see that, that they put out, these are the places you go if you don't have a lender. We got that out on Friday. Uh, yeah, go ahead, Bob, next one. The top part here, this is something you won't see on a site. Businesses uh, that applied but have not received an emergency industry, EIDL, may have reason for optimism. Please check your EIDL application number. If it is uh, streamlined EIDL starting with a three, it has not been processed yet. There are others that haven't been processed, but two, but threes haven't at all. And see, that's pretty important, I think, and that's the kind of little bit we get once in a while on a phone call from somebody, not, you know, not something that we can find and we get that out to our businesses and then soon also Rockingham businesses. And also the last thing we have on here that is unique to this email is that uh, there's a lot of new webinars that SBDC is putting out and we're going to continue to push those out for businesses. Um, and then the last part of this shows, uh, we try to encourage people to do the survey. Um, and just to remind, our survey that's out right now is strictly about the resources, strictly about the state and federal resources. Um, we're going to have another one, like I said, coming out midweek that will be specific to businesses and I'll send it to you folks as well. Um, okay. And now, so here's, here's what the resource survey looks like. Um, can you go down more? Continuing on with, with the survey and then here's where it gets fun. So I don't think anybody's seen this. So of our 100 responses, we see that 71% of the 100 responses are actually attempting to access COVID-19 resources. And then we see that the state resources are actually split up pretty good, but of the 100 people, we can see who's using what by the state. And by the way, because the survey actually has areas for them to write in about their experience with the, with the sources and that allows me to go in and try to see how many people are saying the same thing and then push that information back out to SBA and to the state. Uh, next. Uh, this is the, obviously the big one, the PPP is by far the largest. We don't know if there's going to be another round of EIDL. We are hoping that there will be. Uh, we don't know. Next. Uh, and then interesting here, the Families First uh, Response Act um, and the IRS Employee Retention Credit, a lot of the folks, 94% are, are not using an exit. No need for it. On this, I just wanted to show that this was, uh, this is the kind of thing that makes Russ and I very happy. Um, this is, we worked with C3I, we, we were of some assistance anyway, at least getting information. Um, but they were able to get their loan on the second round and thank God they did because they're, they're, they're doing great things. I was talking to Mike Curry today and he was saying that um, in his business, uh, they are stopping people at the door with a temperature and they're having their, uh, using all the things the governor say you have to do with the masks and the, and the social distancing in the building, they're doing that. Another business uh, used the PPP program to uh, have, take their workforce, okay, have one half their workforce work in the morning, the other half of the workforce work in the afternoon and they're able to pay them for 40 hours a week, everybody, because of that program. Okay, let's go, let's go one more. I'm almost done, you guys. So what I wanted to show is I, I drove around today just so the public could see what we actually have still going right now. This is Unitil that was taken today, they're going, getting blessed to get it done. This is uh, Ray Farm, you can see the finished project on the right, the ongoing one, the clubhouse is in between them. Go ahead. Uh, this is Sig's Tower Full Parking Lot. Uh, Cobham is full all the way around, they're uh, packed, packed. So that's great news for Cobham. Saw Billy Brewing is, you know, as you can see, they, I want, just wanted to show you that because the flowers I thought were pretty nice inside the uh, boxes. But see, but the good, the good thing about this is they're actually going to have outdoor seating. And so I'm hoping that if where, where is possible, we can try to assist uh, restaurants with their outdoor seating per the governor's uh, orders. And then I just had a couple funny ones to show you. I thought I'd show Russ the very first Tampa Bay jersey and Brady jersey I saw. And then uh, this last one's pretty funny too. We were, I took my daughters um, up to uh, UNH and I thought that mask was pretty funny. So, thought it'd get you a little comic relief. Anyway, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for Darren?
Sorry for the length of that.
No, I was going to say, take your time. I mean, this is, this is valuable, this is good stuff. Um, you are, I mean, you must be seven days a week. I know you've been, you've been working incredibly hard, you and I have had conversations.
Most rewarding thing I've ever done in my life.
Thank you. Select woman Gilman.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, thanks Darren. Um, you gave us a lot of information. I just want you to um, consider next time you're speaking where the public will hear you that um, a lot of the acronyms are unknown to the rest of the world. But also, also I was wondering, um, you've put together a lot of information for the businesses, which is great, and, and you've found some that is unique to the work that you're doing that isn't up on any state or federal website. Um, but my question is, how much are you actually duplicating and can you just send people to the state's website? The nh.gov/covid19 is pretty up to date.
It's, it's up to date, it's definitely up to date, but the, but the thing is, it's, they update it every day and we do too. If you look at ours and compare ours to theirs, it's a bit different because what I was asked to do by my business is make it easy. Put all the sources on one and take away all of the verbiage. And so if you'll notice at the end of all the emails I send out, I say, go to BEA site, go to SBDC site. You know, those are two sites you should keep looking at as well, but I'm trying to keep my, the actual resource list, which is on our website and a link to it goes on our, on our, on our emails, uh, a bit different. I don't add anything uh, that isn't new or try not to add anything that isn't new in the, in the write-up of the uh, resource outreach. Um, but the, but the, the actual list is on our site. And, and I, I just tell businesses, don't rely on me. Rely on me and SBDC and BEA and RPC, et cetera. The more they, the more information they get, the better.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Darren? Great. Darren, thank you. Oh, no, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You were raising your own, you were raising your own hand.
I was, saying goodbye.
Thank you, Darren. Good work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
Okay, next, Chief Wilking.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm excited to be here tonight, look forward to many more meetings with you as well. Um, sounds like great work with Darren and I know there's a lot of people in town doing a lot of great work as well. Um, we, our phones ring all day, every day on issues and I know James Murray's on if you need to talk with him, but uh, the Health Department is, is kind of dovetailing right in behind Darren. We're the ones that are going out and helping the restaurants with those seating, determining where the, the outside seating is appropriate and perhaps when it's not and how we can all help with that. And I know there's some campground information coming up as well, so all good. And I, I know he's, everything we've heard in town, he's very much appreciated by all the business owners. So my hat's off to Darren. So really quick, um, I, I did submit a report late today. Again, I apologize. The state of New Hampshire has been ramping up testing. Um, they're telling me they're doing around 1,500 a day. So with the increased testing, we can expect increased uh, test, positive test results. The people were very likely positive for some time, but were not able to get tested and now they are. Um, 580 people in a week, by far the largest week we've had uh, to date, 219 new in Rock County and two new positive tests in Exeter bringing a total from 11, which we'd been sitting at for about a week of 10 days uh, to 13. Uh, very respectable for a town our size, but uh, we need to keep the pressure on and keep the uh, uh, social distancing up. Um, Fight About Was That Full Staff for One Full Week? Woohoo! Um, then the Massachusetts National Guard stepped in and grabbed one of our guys uh, who reports to Devon's and uh, they mobilized one of their units to assist with the nursing home crisis in Massachusetts. Uh, good news, it's only a month. Uh, we did write a letter, attempt to get uh, Ryan out, but it was, uh, it was turned down, it was rejected. So Ryan will be, uh, he has already reported to do it, he'll be back the end of the month. Um, we are continuing- We are continuing to test our people and by and large, we are a healthy bunch, as healthy as we can be. On some monetary side, I attended a FEMA applicant briefing about a week ago. There are guidelines coming down. They recommend putting together reimbursement requests by the month. They're considering them small projects, as long as the project is in excess of $3,300, it'll comply. So we're going to follow that practice and put together monthly total starting in March. We'll do March, April, May and ongoing, obviously, as we incur costs. Good news side, it seems like they're pretty aggressively reimbursing for equipment and PPE. But as with most FEMA reimbursements, they're only interested in reimbursing for eligible overtime, which is kind of disappointing because I know a lot of our straight time efforts have been put in by salary people as well as losing folk to childcare, quarantine and others. We're hoping to be able to reimburse that. On the good news side, I think Russ might have some, some news on that to fill in the blanks. But we'll be seeking FEMA reimbursement. Our, our state folks are working harder at increasing the reimbursement levels from 75%, which is usual and customary to somewhere near 100%. I'm not sure what, how the efforts will pan out, but we're always encouraged when we hear things like that. Darren touched on a couple of things. I'll just run down through the report. Governor Sununu unveiled his long, highly anticipated New Hampshire Stay-at-Home 2.0 with it. And I want to make sure we reiterate, the order continues to ask that people not gather greater than 10, practice social distancing, wearing masks until the end of May. So you're going to hear some dates or things are going to open up, but we still want to use all due caution. So I really encourage all the residents listening or will watch easier to please continue the good work that we've been doing in Exeter. But a few of the benchmarks are starting May 1st. All the campgrounds, private campgrounds allowed to open to New Hampshire residents. We of course have Exeter M's in Greigate. James has been in contact with both of them today to discuss their plans to reopen. So New Hampshire residents and those we be members, well, I put members in quotes in my report because member seems to be those folk that have a permanent structure that they can return to. So they're not bringing a camper, they're not bringing a tent. But they can, they can come from out of state because they own a, a structure at one of the campgrounds. So we're going to keep an eye on that and see where that's going. As we move forward, May 4th, of course, I was at the hospital today. They had a small incident. I had a chance to speak with some of the hospital officials. They're excited about the ability to phase in some elective surgeries and non-emergent healthcare services. So starting May 4th, they're going to be beginning that and it's going to really do a lot to increase their ability to, to keep the services and their employees going. I know they're feeling quite the pinch on cash flow. Beginning May 11th, you'll see more and more retail establishments open. From what I'm reading is to about the 50% allowed occupant load. The governor's order cites building and fire code. So whatever a retail space was allowed to have for people, they're going to be asked to create a plan. And again, we're going to work with them on an appropriate occupant load, a customer load for their buildings to make sure it works. And with all of these, the governor asks that they maintain social distancing, hand sanitization and things of that nature. I know what little gray hair I have left is getting quite long and I'm excited that around May 11th, the barber shops and salons will be able to open. Maximum in the building at any time is 10. That includes the stylists to the barbers. So that's a very small group of folk, but hope and that'll, that'll move on. And for those of us that enjoy swinging the club, thankfully golf courses are about to open on the 11th to get us out. And that should be a lot of fun, too. Got to own your own clubs and have a tee time, but go for it and have a ball. Lastly, May 18, the food service industry kind of gets phased in. Our restaurants, several have already been in touch with James and like I mentioned earlier, we're going to work with them. But they're going to be allowed to move from the current curbside takeout and delivery aspects to an outside seating. That won't be appropriate for all New Hampshire, all Exeter restaurants, but we're certainly going to work with as many as we can to, to increase that. And James and I were talking today that even if we can get a 10%, you know, greater, you know, sales and customers in, I think it's a win-win. It's moving in the right direction. So, so we're excited about doing that. Darren, I already showed you the slide, but I repeat it for those on TV. And to Julie's end, nh.gov, it is a pretty inclusive site. I've been on it most of the day today. Click on the box clearly marked information on Stay-at-Home 2.0 and it brings you right to that list you saw on the slide that Darren has. So if anybody in town, a patron or customer as well as a business owner wants more specific information on their type of business, industry, retail, click on that link and it brings you right to it and it kind of boils down the 45-page governor order right to very specific information. As always, New Hampshire 211 is still available as well to everybody who might still need additional information. So that's where I'm at. I'm going to let Russ pick up more of the financial piece than that, but I appreciate the opportunity to address it tonight.
Thank you, Chief. I read your memo a couple of hours ago and I was thrilled that you answered all the questions I was prepared to ask. So I, I don't have any to ask you tonight, but it will open up to the board. If any of the board have any questions for Chief Wilken. And I see Selectwoman Gilman has her hand up.
Busy night for me. This question is probably more for Mr. Dean. Considering that we have a lot of restaurants on sidewalks that don't give a lot of space for outdoor seating, but we'd really like to have an opportunity. I was wondering if the town planner and, and Mr. Wynton, the Economic Development Director, might take a look at pop-up restaurants. They're much like pop-up parks where they only last for a couple of days or a day, where, where businesses could take over, you know, three or four parking spaces. They'd be closed off and then put their outdoor furniture out there because they still require from the, from the executive order to have some space around them. So it's not like they can be crammed together. So I just wanted to throw that out there as something to think about.
Right. And, and my thought is with the order just coming out Friday and this being Monday, I'm sure as we begin to digest it this week, and that's one of the themes as we're already trying to hit the ground running as much as we can, as you heard, we'll certainly keep an open mind and be thinking about those businesses and making those contacts and hearing their ideas as well. So we want to, we, we want to be able to help where we can. We know some of our geography is very restrictive when it comes to these things. So some things are going to be a natural challenge, but we're definitely open to suggestions and ideas. And we'll be continuing that work this week.
Yeah, Julie, I would, I would agree with that. James and I had about an hour-long conversation today just brainstorming the different restaurants that we have. And I hate to, the food service, food service total, not just restaurants. And we're perhaps appropriate, which aren't. And I'd be more than happy James can work with Russ or Darren and all. Of course, from a safety aspect, you bring up great points. We should try to have that six-foot spacing around tables and people on the sidewalk. But we also want to make sure that, you know, the parking spots are appropriate. And, and I don't want to think terrible, but you hate to have a motor vehicle accident, you know, in tables. It could be very high press to barricade some of the spots, but it could be appropriate. We'll certainly look at all those as well. We'll be, we want to be an active player of that.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? Chief, if you would, if you could hang, hang on with us, and I think James is still with us. Russ, if you'll excuse me, I, before we get to you, I, I was remiss in, neglected to mention that Greg Besson and Melissa Roy are with us, the Director and Assistant Director of Parks and Rec respectively. We have a couple of things that are going to kind of involve them, the Select Board and also public safety. So if we could all, Russ, if you could hold on with your report. Couple of things that we need to talk about tonight. First of all, the board needs to have a discussion as to whether or not we want to extend the Swayze Park closure for another 30 days. Because I believe that when we made the motion at our first Zoom meeting, it was for a trial of 30 days. And I think that that's pretty much expired. So we need to have that conversation. I'd also like Parks and Rec to weigh in. You know, they had an advisory committee meeting last week. If Melissa and Greg could weigh in on any recommendations or anything they've heard from the state regarding summer camps and, and whatnot. And thirdly, I'd like to discuss the farmer's market and the relocation of that possibly temporarily and how that'll play into our discussion on Swayze. So why don't we start with, with Greg and Melissa? If you want to just give a quick overview as to what recommendations, if any, you've heard regarding summer camp, the safety of which and whether or not communities may even be able to consider that.
Thank you, Nico. Greg Besson, Exeter Parks and Recreation. Just to give you a little backup history, we've actually been working with our State Association and the ACA. That's the American Campers Association. And RPA, which is National Parks and Recreation Association, as well as the CDC and developing guidelines for summer camps. Not going to sugarcoat it. It's going to be very difficult. And we actually sat in on a Zoom call with Primex last week and they said, people need to get into their minds that their summer camp of the past is not going to be the summer camp if we're able to offer it this year. Some of the restrictions so far that we've heard is pretty much eight kids per two staff members, which might be very tough. And those eight kids will be with those eight kids the whole entire summer. They're not going to be intermingling. We have to keep them the six feet apart and keeping them very safe. We have to look at games, which are encourage social distancing. We also have to increase hand washing stations. There's a number of things that we are going through and coming up with budget numbers. We put out a survey just last week and good enough that Melissa can talk to some of the responses. We had 190 people respond so far. It's positive that people want summer camp, but there's so much unknown out there. We just wanted to make sure people understood that. It's going to be a difficult summer, but we are going to offer the best solution and the safest way we can do it for a summer camp.
So what type of, what timeframe are you recommending? Obviously, we, we don't want to wait till the last minute. However, we don't want to make a decision so prematurely that families who are, you know, counting on summer camp as an option for their kids, you know, may be affected negatively because we jumped the guns. So I'd like to maybe, and, and I don't expect that you're going to have that answer right now, but I think that you and Melissa need to be able to, you know, have that massaged in a way that you can come to the Select Board with the recommendation timely enough, but not prematurely enough.
Well, having listened to Task Force phone call this more, this afternoon at 3 o'clock, they did discuss summer camps briefly at the beginning of it. Right now on the table is a 100-page recommendation that will be going out to all the summer camps that the Task Force almost sounded intimidated to tackle in their, in their meeting and that they're leaving it up to us. So Chris Edmonds, the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of Central New Hampshire is heading up. He's on the Task Force, the work group. We are fortunate enough to have Donna Keithy from Molten Borough Recreation supporting Parks and Recreation. Because one of the representatives today on the call specifically called out there, let's not forget about the Parks and Recreation Apartments that offer day camps because right now it's all the YMCA's, the Boys and Girls Clubs, the, anyone that is a bigger nonprofit agency with some of these overnight camps have a lot of representation on the Task Force. So we're hoping to be able to come to you by May 18th, at least with our proposed recommendations and tells you what we're going to be doing safety-wise. And then let you guys, and I'll be running it by James and Eric as well. I think they need to be involved in it once we actually get that document. And 100 pages is going to be a good night's reading. But it's very important to know if we can financially do it because it is going to be very difficult. As you know, being self-funded and the revolving fund, most of our programs break even. So any kind of fluctuation in revenue makes it very difficult. Especially one of the, the most difficult parts about this is discussing the pool. Some people are opening it nationwide, some are not. China is closing them down again because there's a second wave of COVID that is breaking out in Beijing. So it's, it's going to be a debate, but we depend on revenue to at least get close. Most municipal pools do not make money. We, we, it's a, it's a, it's, it's a big expense. And just to start off at the very beginning of the summer, if we don't have our swim lessons, our lap swimmers, anyone coming in for a day pass, it's about $35,000 to run a pool. So I don't know financially when the board actually, when our presentation, is there something we want to tackle to have as an option for summer camp?
Okay.
Greg, can I also ask you just a quick question? And I know that you're, you're talking about numbers and I know that we are, out of all the camps, have probably one of the larger numbers of kids per square footage. And so is it part of the conversation that we are possibly looking at alternative locations to break up the camp? So that, you know, if it's going to be a two to eight ratio for camp, where is everyone going to go? Because how can you actually have the numbers that we typically have for our camp in that particular area? Do we have alternative locations, maybe like one day is an indoor area over at the tuck building? And one day is for one group who are going to use Planet Playground area and the pool? And then they rotate during the week? Is that part of the discussion or are you just kind of wait and see?
Well, Lovey, I'm glad you brought that up. One of the things that we have been informed by the SAU is we will not have access to the schools this summer.
Oh, we, so we, we won't?
We won't have access to the schools. That makes it, yeah, that makes it very difficult. We have reached, we have reached out to another organization and hoping to hear back from them to see if we have access to it. We have considered moving them and having different rec programs at different parks. That becomes a challenge if, one, if we keep the pool open just for those camp kids, how do we transport them? But two, we need facilities. The rec park has all the facilities that we can use. And it is 11 robust acres that we can spread the kids out. In the responses, to be honest, that we got back, there's quite a few people that still do not feel comfortable enough in sending their kids. So we've had a handful of refunds requested because a lot of them, if they're either furloughed or laid off and they're, they're home, one, they can't afford to send their kid to summer camp. And two, they're home, so they don't need childcare. So it's, it's that delicate balance, like as our numbers go down, how much can we absorb?
Right. And the, the other question is also, do we have a confirmed number of staff who are going to work this summer so that we have those numbers of the two to eight ratio, if that's what's going to happen?
We, we're getting there. We just posted another ad. But as you know, it's, it's very difficult to get the people to sign up for this because it's so much uncertainty. We've talked to our, some of our pool staff as well to see if they would be interested if we don't open the pool or if the pool is limited. How do we incorporate them into camp to give them those hours and help us with meeting those ratios? So those are two of the major things. And one of the things the CDC is recommending so far, and I don't know if Eric and James have seen it, but they're not recommending opening playgrounds for a summer.
Right.
So that could be a bit, the nice thing is the wooden playgrounds aren't as bad as the other playgrounds.
Metal, metal playgrounds, right?
Yeah, exactly. So we'll see how that goes if it's a little more flexible. Because if we can't use Planet Playground, that's going to be a big problem as well.
Okay. Well, good luck. It sounds like a really hard process to go through.
It's been, this past weekend, I probably worked a couple of good, strong days because a lot of us on the Executive Board of our State Association, which I'm past president, we're, we've been going back and forth with emails and suggestions and trying to get on there. And we're, we almost bullied our way onto the Task Force work group, which is good because they weren't inviting Parks and Rec from municipalities because they, they look at us as being the, the, the cheap option. So they're all looking to generate.
Frugal. We use, frugal is the word that we like to use. But one, one other question, and I don't know what percentage of families who are not in Exeter use the Exeter. Do we have families who are outside of Exeter who use the Exeter Parks and Rec Summer Camp?
Very few.
Okay. So it's not really, it's not an issue then that we have folks coming from, not like Camp Lincoln or other camps that have more regional.
Predominantly Exeter.
Okay. So that makes it a little easier then in terms of keeping it local. Okay. Thank you, Greg.
You're welcome.
Greg, of the 190 some odd surveys that you had returned, Greg, of the 190-some-odd surveys that you had returned, what, what percentage, estimate, you know, what percentage of the families were still keen on perhaps considering summer camp, if in fact, it seemed to be safe?
Melissa actually probably has that up, close to her, because in our staff meeting this morning, we, we read through the whole survey, and it was, we asked all the questions, Nico. So Melissa, do you have that number by chance?
I do. I'm just pulling it. I had it pulled up, and then I switched my screen, so I apologize. Give me just one second. Let me scroll down to that answer. So currently, right now, one of the questions was, which statement best describes your family's plans this summer? 60% or 116 families said they are only interested in an in-person virtual camp, excuse me, an in-person camp versus a virtual. And then, they, so it says, if an in-person camp can, oh, sorry, I'm going to the wrong ones. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. Are you planning on sending your children to summer camp if an in-person program is offered? 63%, 121 people said yes. 12 people said no, which was 6.3%, and 59 or 30% said maybe. So we know for a fact that we're going to lose some registrations, just because of people concerned about the virus, people have lost their jobs and no longer need daycare. But it looks like we would get between 100, we think between 150, maybe at 185. That could go up, if all of the sudden, people see and feel more comfortable with the way that New Hampshire is trending. That was a lot of the comments that we got, it was, well, we need to see what's happening. It is a little tricky to kind of turn around and be able to run a full-on summer camp in like, a week. So, and some of the other comments that we got were, can you please make a decision, because if you're not available, we're essential workers, and we need to figure it out. So I, I do think there's a fine balance. We definitely don't want to pull the trigger too early, but we also can't wait to the la, very last minute for families either. So I don't have an answer on what that balance is. Well, I think we're coming back on the 18th to give you a better presentation, more comprehensive presentation, but at least you guys could have, hear some of the issues that we're kind of coming up against. Ask us any questions, send us any emails with anything that you have. We are literally, Greg, I mean, we joke, we have plans like A through H, and all different budgets trying to be put together to see what we can do with both the pool and summer camp.
Okay. Is, is perhaps shortening the camp and starting late, would that be a viable option if that were to be safe?
100% Nico. Yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
Oh, sorry. No, yes. Yeah, so that was one of the questions, Greg, if you want to talk, and I'll pull that up while you talk.
Yeah. One of the questions we asked, because depending on how it projects and everything, we're hoping possibly, maybe if we have to push it back till after July 4th, to have a little more sense of where COVID-19 is going. But we also thought about condensed days, maybe if we start at 9 and have staggered drop-offs, where this is your timeframe, this is where you drop them off, and then a shortened day, because one of the things, if we don't, we're not able to open the pool, it's a hot day, it's 90 degrees, the kids have been running around, they're not going to want to be there till 4. And one of the things in the recommendation for camp is limiting the hours. So no longer than eight hours. So for us that has offered aftercare for a long time, that would be off the table as well. So people wouldn't be able to work late and come pick their kids up at 5:30. And it would also throw away our whole scenario, if kids are in a certain group together for so many days, and then, or hours, and then suddenly, we're, we throw them all together at the aftercare. We've just ruined everything we've done all day. Yeah.
Exactly, exactly.
We are hoping that it will follow the model of Maine. Maine, I know, is trending that they're going to allow 40 or more kids per group for their summer camp, which would make it a little bit more manageable for us. But until the Task Force makes a recommendation, which I believe they're going to be hopefully presenting this week or next week, and get the governor to, to either say yay or nay for summer camps.
And even if you go forward, inclement weather is out, right? I mean, if it's, if it's raining, then there's no, obviously, there's nowhere to go. So.
Yeah. And that's a call we would have to make pretty early, Nico, because one of the things, we can't be, you know, the New England thunderstorms rolling on in, and we know the bathhouse is the only place to put them, so we can't be squeezing them in there, and then there's no social distancing there, you're touching each other.
Okay, all right.
So on this survey, we asked about a shortened day from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, just because it would be less time at the camp and all that jazz. So we had 113 people say, yes, they would still send their kid to camp. We had 37 people say, no, they wouldn't, and we had 42 people say, maybe. I think there's a lot of families that need the childcare that really would consider a lot of options. So I definitely don't think we'd be, you know, at zero, for sure.
Okay, all right. All right. Well, it sounds like more to come. Our next meeting, May 18th, and we'll look forward to your updates and any recommendations that you may have. But stay by.
We'll have a whole presentation, and you know, things have been changing more and more, and the amount of webinars I've been on, and Melissa's been on, just to talk about this one thing, because it is, the COVID-19, just like the small businesses, are really devastating Parks and Rec agencies all over the country. For instance, when this first broke out, New York City, which is an extreme example, their Parks and Rec budget's $580 million, and they expected an 80% shortfall in revenue.
Wow.
So there, there's some give and take there, and we'll, we'll figure out how to make it work.
Okay, I know you will. Thank you both. But stay, hang tight. Russ, maybe you and Melissa can walk us through the farmer's market?
Sure. I'll, I'll start it by saying, obviously, we talked a little bit about the farmer's market being an essential business under the governor's designation, under the executive orders. And one of the issues, and I know James Murray is here as well, we've been trying to sort through how to best go about, go about having the market, but also be conscious of the executive order with the public gathering standard still at 10 people. And that's been something that has been really tricky and difficult to balance. So what we've been doing is working with the representatives from the farmer's market, trying to find a location other than Swayze that would be amenable to the market, and really respect the ideas of social distancing, perhaps some restrictions like masks there, hand sanitizer. And there's a number of farmer's markets around the state that have actually created a list of things that they need to provide in order to effectively have the market. So James has been pointing on that, Melissa's been pointing on that. I think where we are in the process is, our, our recommendation, our thought is that we really want to see the farmer's market go over to SST. And before I go further than that, I, I also want to point out, David Ryan, our superintendent of schools of SAU 16, has been an amazing partner in working with us on this particular issue, to try to leverage either the Main Street School Lot, the Lincoln Street School Lot, the high school was, was thought of as an option. And at the end of the day, SST seemed to be a great alternative, because the site really works in terms of trying to allow for proper flow of traffic and so forth. And I guess, overall, our, our, our main concern is the gathering aspects, right? This has the potential to bring a lot of people into the downtown, and so we're just concerned about that. We want to be a good partner with the farmer's market. We want to help them, and certainly, we were willing to do what, what we can do to ensure they're successful. But given the situation we're in, that's really where we are. And I know one of their reps is here tonight to talk to you, but I want to do at least kick it off by saying, that's, that's where we are at this point.
Okay. Melissa, James, did you have anything to add before we open it up?
James and I have been working with their group, just trying to figure out options and, and what we can do at this point. I think they would prefer not to be at the SST. I will let them speak of that when they, when they come up and chat. James and I did a site walk today with Greg as well, and we feel pretty confident that there's plenty of space there. There's a great way to have a wonderful traffic pattern, and keep people pretty safe. We actually saw a resident parking through the parking lot, asking what we were doing. We told them the farmer's market was, was potentially coming there, and they were so excited, because it was near where they lived. So, you know, I, James, do you have any other feedback?
Yeah, I think, you know, I've been talking with Dorian from the farmer's market, and I absolutely believe that we can put on a safe market, using hand wash stations, sanitizer, masks and gloves, social distance. We have everything we need to put on a safe farmer's market, but the venue is going to be a big factor in that. So my biggest problem with the parkway, for example, is just the bottleneck, the funnel that goes into the parkway and out of it. You know, when we were looking at SST today, the Tuck Learning Center parking lot area, there's so much open room, good parking, you know, we're not going to flood the downtown area. I just think, you know, the venue is going to be a big factor in how we pull this off safely.
Well, and two, I mean, presently, the parkway's closed, which, again, we'll be discussing in a few minutes whether or not that will continue. But, you know, currently it's closed. I think that, you know, the farmer's market is essential, we, we want to support it, but it needs to be done in a safe way. And, and, and I think that SST for right now, and this is, again, this would be something that we would consider maybe temporarily, not permanently. But I think right now, it assures, it assures the, the market, the merchants, the customers, and everybody a safer and a healthier way to go about, you know, purchasing, you know, the goods that the farmer's market sells. So before we have a board discussion, why don't we hear, Bob, if you could open up the line for the representative from the farmer's market, so we can hear from them?
Sure, yeah. They, they let me know that they're not an Exeter resident, so are you cool still letting them speak, or do you have to vote? I wasn't sure.
I'd like the board to, to vote. Madam Clerk? Julie with us?
Looks like she's still there. I, I see her, she just doesn't have her, she's muted, and her video's gone.
Well, let me put it this way, are there any objections from the board members to having a non-Exeter resident speak?
Not currently, no.
Okay, Bob, why don't you open it up?
All right, she should be good to go.
Great, thank you.
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm still working with, trying to get video going. Let's try this.
Do you guys want her to have video? Because I can, I can give her video access if you want. Up to the, up to the chair.
Um, I would say that we just probably do the same thing that we do for everyone else. I don't know.
Sounds good.
I think, yeah, we can hear you fine, Dorian.
Okay. So some of the requirements that we've already talked about, you've discussed as well, max, masks, gloves. The reason we're looking to have the farmer's market in Swayze Park is because of all the changes that are going on. Sometimes it's really nice to have something that feels the same and brings comfort to the, to the community. We're hoping that we're not shuffled around different parts of the, the town for different months. So if, if you do require us to move, we'd prefer to have it for the entire time, which goes until the end of October. So the, the length of time that we would be in this parking lot might cause a problem as well. Swayze, Swayze Park is a beautiful park. We've measured it, and if we have vendors on one side, we have enough for a six-foot alleyway for people to wait for access to attend, as well as having a one-way movement path, so they can move from the downtown Exeter through the vendors, and they can either circle around on the riverside has a sidewalk, or they go out through the parking lot. So we do plan on having an access that keeps everyone moving in one direction. We have a couple of requirements. The agricultural vendors, everything will be prepackaged, so the customer doesn't actually touch any food of anyone else's. Everything will be new plastic bags, we will not be using any reusable bags. All the prepared food vendors, everything will be prepackaged for takeout style. There'll be no cooking, no packaging at the markets, no samples, no ready-to-eat foods. So people will just pick up their foods and leave. Only foods that are designated to be consumed off-site will be sold. We're limiting the number of vendors, there will only be 17, and that consists of food and plants, because they're edible plants, as well as a soap vendor. So there aren't any crafts, there aren't any music, there are no guests. It's just local farmers from Rockyham, Stratford, and York Counties. There's only going to be allowed one shopper in a tent, and a tent is 10 by 10. So there's enough space that allows for this for us. We have a tent and a vehicle spacing throughout the market, so there's more than six feet between tents to provide for spacing. It also provides for a person to be waiting in line to get access to a tent. We have drop-off phone numbers, so that a, a person can call, get an order packed up, and then they can just come in, pick up their order, and pay and leave. We're encouraging cash-free, no-touch payment options, which would help getting people in and out, so that there isn't any gathering. And it, I mean, we might have lost the handshake, but we have a beautiful park. I mean, it's a part of Exeter, it's, it's been there, it's, it makes people feel more comfortable.
No, I understand what you're saying, and I think that how you've described the safety and health precautions that you're taking with the market are fantastic. My, my issue, or what I'm thinking of, is the actual flow. Again, presently, the parkway is closed to vehicular traffic, so that people can walk and exercise. I think that, for what we're trying to accomplish, while we have the recommendation of groups staying less than 10 people, I think that SST is, is a location that flows a little bit better. But I also would ask Mr. Dean, because I, I think Jennifer's off the line now, but what's the update on the new, on the New Fields Road paving, and how would that affect short-term if we were to have the market at Swayze?
Uh, it would, the paving project would just mean no access from the north end of Swayze.
Okay.
At this point.
Okay.
And just, just out of curiosity, has it been discussed to have two relatively close locations for the farmer's market? You know, splitting it up, one primarily by prepared foods, and the other by more, I don't know, more flowers, jarred items, wood crafting, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I, I have not heard that.
At this point, Lovey, we haven't had that discussion. We've only talked about locations that could support the entire farmer's market.
Oh, okay.
So Dorian, I, I understand your, your, you know, comment about wanting it to be consistent from May through October. And again, you know, the SST venue, if that's decided, you know, could be a, a temporary solution for the month of May, or the month of May and June. You know, a lot of essential businesses are making sacrifices. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not ideal, and I get that. And, you know, it may take a little more advertising to get the word out. You know, I understand all of the hardships that you're bringing up. But, I mean, is that, are there any other concerns that I'm missing?
I'm sorry, concerns as far as whether one location is better than another?
Changing venue. No, your concern earlier, if I understood you correctly, was that you didn't want to have to change in midstream, so to speak. So for instance, if you were SST for a couple of months, and then, and then have to move to Swayze, if that were the case halfway through the summer. I mean, how, how much of a hardship is that?
Raise hand. Am I, I've got a raised, okay, good, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, the, you have to redesign an entire market for each location. You have to place each vendor in a different place. Customers kind of get trained to, um, go to a particular place, pick up exactly what they want, get out. We have a lot of people that if you even move from one side to the other, completely lose you. So having a consistency, um, throughout the, the seven months is really important for the customers.
Sure. Thank you. Discussion amongst the board.
Nico, just one point real quick I'd like to make is that, um, depending upon the board's decision, what, what we also could do is we typically put the trailer out at different times. Um, and we could, you know, we could help people find SST. I mean, my own opinion is that a lot of people will know where to go and, and know what it is. But, uh, to the extent we can add any additional to that, we, we certainly would, could make that effort too.
Julie, I see your hand up before, before you ask your question though, Russ, um, to Dorian's point, what's the commitment, uh, that we have from SST? For a period of time?
Um, well, I think we, yeah, I think we were thinking of this through the May 31 order. But I'd have to defer if Melissa has heard any more than that at this point.
Okay.
So my understanding is what Russ is saying, that we're trying to get through the stay-in-place or safer-at-home 2.0. Um, we know the farmer's market is great at Swayze and we'd love to get them back to Swayze. We just are trying to sort of follow the rules and right at this time, like you said, Swayze is closed to vehicular traffic with some pretty large barriers put in. So we'd have to, um, ask DPW and, and I think fire, uh, excuse me, police, um, about moving those for one day. And then I also, and I apologize because I haven't been down, um, to Swayze. But I think the direction of walking is currently the opposite way than what is being proposed right now. So I think the thought was that we would keep Swayze for walking and exercise. And as soon as we can get the market down there, we would. Um, Tuck said we can be there for, you know, what we need right now. But I know we won't be able to be there through October because obviously school will be starting and that kind of stuff.
Hopefully.
Yeah, stop that.
Julie?
Um, my, uh, question was answered. I just was, um, kind of agreeing with Dorian about having school start up. And, and even though it, the, um, farmer's market's only once a week, it still would be disruptive during school.
And I don't think our, I, I would have to have a conversation with the superintendent. And I'm not sure how long they could go with it, but that's a conversation that we could have. I mean, I don't have an answer for you tonight, but, uh, is June or July an option? I, I just don't know the answer to that at this point.
Okay. Anybody else, Lovey, do you have any other comments or thoughts?
Too many for right now. Um, yeah. You guys are working on this, so I think you have far more information than I do. I'm, I'm trusting that the conversation that you guys are having, you flushed out a lot of the things that are sort of in my head. So we'll kind of see what, what pans out. Melissa?
I'm sorry, I couldn't figure out how to raise my hand, I apologize. Um, I wanted to also say that Russ and Greg and I had spoken, um, if it is moved, we're happy to put the information on our website, on our Facebook page. Try to help them get the word out to some of the other groups. We may be able to ask if they would post the change in location and a vendor map and, or anything like that. So we understand that it is a little tricky to do this and we do really want to help.
Thank you. Molly?
Um, yeah, I mean, my thoughts are this is all inconvenient for so many people. And I really appreciate Dorian, how much thought, uh, you all have put into social distancing. I come at it pretty worried about what's going to happen in that corridor downtown. There's already still wells, which makes me crazy. You know, there's those lines of people who are not wearing masks. Um, and, and I really worry about what's going to happen if we're not thinking really seriously about people's health and safety and the crowding. And so I completely take into consideration your concerns about consistency and how much planning it does. But I also really want to think through what our health officer is, is saying and what are the guidelines from the state and the CDC? In terms of mask glaring, social and spatial distancing, um, and how we can, you know, have all of the things that we need to have as a town happen at the same time.
Julie?
Yes, I, I wanted to sort of follow up with, uh, what Ms. Cowan just said and ask, uh, Dorian, do you uh, see that you're, or think in any, I know it's kind of far out there that, but that you'll have, have the same level of customers that we do now? Because when you go down there, uh, you know, any other year, the place is packed and it's standing room only. And I, you know, I have to brush shoulders with everyone. And so if, if we have to have the six-foot distancing and you have a one-way path, are you still going to be able to accommodate that large crowd?
Um, my hand says lowered, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, thank you.
All right. Um, what we are going to do is we are going to limit our guest vendors and our craft vendors. So we're looking at 17 people. So it'd go about, um, 50 feet beyond the second entrance in the mark, in the, in the market. So it's not a, um, very long distance that we're talking about and we're already limiting our members. So, um, that's kind of helping us keep it short. There is a 10-foot space and a four-foot space. You have 14 feet between the edge of the tent and the other curb. So that's enough to have two pathways if we need it, or it's enough to have one, um, person waiting to get into the tent as well as a pathway. And because of the sidewalk on the other side, you can circle people around so that everyone keeps moving. We're going to have, um, special, uh, it's a, it's local, um, farmers. And what you do is the customers ask the vendors to package up the product. So it's really fast. It's not a lounging, looking at, um, items. It's a grab and go kind of situation. So we're really trying to limit any type of gathering, um, that, that has occurred in the past. We've also contacted the state and they are providing us with masks. So any, anyone who comes into the market will be given a mask. Um, we're supposed to pick them up on Wednesday. So like the restaurants, we are also providing that type of, um, safety for all of the people that come to the market. As far as numbers, um, some people are, feel uncomfortable coming to the market. We are hoping to have our first hour to be for seniors, high-risk or fragile individuals. So those people that might be a little, um, feel a little uncomfortable will have a designated hour for them to come to the market where they won't have, um, the possible rubbing of shoulders with other people.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to jump in on, on that, um, question as well. And I, I know this, you know, sort of goes against everything that screams a farmer's market. But, um, perhaps for certain vendors who have the capability of having people preorder items that are readily paid for and set aside, that might be something to consider. Um, you know, whatever eases the amount of longevity, interaction that takes place can maybe lessen the amount of, you know, crowds hovering around certain vendors. One thing to think about, the only reason I say that is because I've seen certain restaurants that do very well with their takeout orders. The downside is that you end up having lines of people outside who are doing pickups. You know, and if everyone is not following that six-foot distancing, we, we end up with issues. And this is on a, and I'm not going to name names, but you end up with people who are very close in a far more open area. So I do have concerns about the Swayze Parkway area being overly crowded. Because once the weather gets nice, people are going to want to be out there. Whether they're purchasing items or not, people just want to be out. And people want to kind of see what's going on and people want to be around people. So I just throw that out there as, as something to consider and to discuss with the vendors who are going to be doing sales. If they can figure out ways to sort of lessen, uh, people standing there and just sort of like, you know, do I want four tomatoes or three? You know, whatever they can do to, to lessen that problem. I would love it if we can figure that out because I don't want to see the farmer's market go. But I also want to make sure that we're doing the best that we can to keep people safe. So it's just that, find that, find that balance that we can, we can figure this out.
Dorian, this is Nico again, um, you know, echoing Lovey, whether it's at Swayze or at SST as a, as a market, what's the plan to ensure that, you know, each tent only has one customer at a time? Or what, what plans do you have in place to sort of police that?
And can you, all right, good. Um, so we will have a person at the entrance and a person at the exit that will explain all of the rules. We will have signage throughout the market that the state, um, the New Hampshire Cooperative Extension Service has actually provided for us and they're wonderful. We will also have volunteers that will be walking through the market to make sure that there are, um, that the rules are being, or the guidelines are being followed. And we are totally in agreement in having, um, packages that are already bunched. So there's no kind of decision between three or four tomatoes, you have to buy a bunch. And there'll be a small, a medium and a large, and you just have to take the bagged of tomatoes. It won't be like going through and choosing two tomatoes or choosing two squashes. The, the customer will have to request the vendor to choose the product and then they're going to have to leave with it. So that will limit the amount of gathering and, and talking and, um, access to other people's food.
That, that sounds like a great idea. And I, I would also maybe just add in, um, from what I've seen at Trader Joe's, they have a really excellent system for maintaining distance while people are both waiting and also shopping. So just, you know, like in, when you attend races, they use the spray paint on the, the asphalt just to create the, the, the distancing so that people know like, okay, this is, this is the purchaser. This is, you're in the queue, you're in the wings, you're in the, you know, whatever, whatever it is. So that, because my biggest, my biggest concern also is people having to self-police is where I get uncomfortable. You know, where you have someone who's in line and then someone who feels like somebody is too close to them. And then that's where you end up getting the, the discomfort because the, the vendor doesn't want to have to be the, the person saying, hey, can you back up? You know, that kind of thing. So whatever we can do to make it as easy for the vendors and for the patrons. Um, and even if it looks like excessive, I'd rather that than having to deal with people who are tired of having to do this and then reacting as such. So, um, I do like what I'm hearing thus far and I, and I hope that we can pull this off because it would be a nice change of pace from, you know, just going to the supermarket, especially when the weather gets nice.
Agreed. So I think as a board, we need to, um, we need to discuss a few things. Um, I mean, the, the market itself, it sounds as if, you know, they're, they're ready to go. They've got the precautions in place. Um, you know, I'm satisfied that, uh, on there and that plan is, is sound. Um, but location, I think is, is something we need to discuss. And whether or not we want to extend the Swayze, um, uh, closure to vehicular traffic for people to walk and exercise. And if we do, do we consider closing it on Thursdays for the farmer's market? Or do we just go with the SST for the next month or two until we can figure out longer term what the state's going to do? And maybe, you know, after May 31st, some things start to open up a little bit. So, um, thoughts from the board? I guess first on whether or not maybe we want to extend the 30-day closure of vehicular traffic. I think it's, it kind of starts with that.
Yes, I agree that we extend it.
Okay.
I agree.
Molly?
Hey.
Okay. So then if we extend it to 30 days, which by the way, I'm also in favor of, um, do we? I, I don't think we can have the expectation that people are not going to walk and exercise while the farmer's market. I, I just don't know how we're going to avoid that crowd, that's my only concern. So do we close the parkway on Thursdays for walkers? Or do we try the SST option for 30 or 60 days? And, and, uh, I mean, I'm just trying to think from a public safety point of view. If you've got both people having the option to exercise and go to the farmer's market, I just, I, I don't see how there's no
It's, it's one or the other.
Yeah.
So I think we say Thursday is farmer's market day. This is a designated space for purchasing items in the farmer's market period. And that's the one day of the week that it's closed off to. And you can set it by hours. I mean, if, what time do the, um, vendors start arriving to do setup?
We start arriving at one o'clock and we're out of there by 6:30.
So similar to what we do when it's for vehicles, right? So they shut down the parkway and then that's when it's, it's closed off to, because you really don't even want people walking in and out of there while they're setting up.
Right.
So then it's closed and then it opens for shoppers only. And then it closes back up until, you know, Friday, when we're back in pedestrian business.
This is making me really nervous. Um, because I think, you know, now we have to consider adding more people and adding another layer of, you know, DPW, public safety, whoever's going to be in here, removing these barriers and then putting them back. And that's more people touching stuff. And having the farmer's market at this place where we are wanting to encourage people to enter and, and, you know, and exercise and have the space so that they can social distance safely. But then we're saying conversely, like get in, get out at the farmer's market, don't linger, make sure to, you know, police yourself. I think that these are two really contradictory things. And I, you know, I want things to be back to normal too. But I am really nervous about what we're telling folks and the contradictory measure, messages that we're putting out if we're having the farmer's market. Where people are going to congregate because I, you know, I hear you, Lovey. Like people want to be out and shopping and, and, you know, and I think that we should encourage this. I think we should encourage shopping from local farmers as much as possible. But I think that it needs to be transactional and not something that is, you know, a, what we traditionally think of the farmer's market, which is more social. So I'm, I'm feeling very nervous with having these two things happen in the same spot.
I'm, I'm fine with wherever it takes place. Either location, as long as we're very clear about how it's going to take place. That's my, you know, so I, whatever works best for the farmers, the, the vendors, for, for DPW, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure it's very clear because it's, it's a lot harder to establish something and then every week go back and say, oh, by the way, we also want to make sure that you guys do this. Oh, and, and let's make sure we do this. So if we're going to do it, let's do it very clearly, logically, and think about all of the, the factors that go into place. And if it's, if Swayze is not the place to do it, then we don't do it there.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I don't want to be switching this up every other, every other day as well. Um, but I also think that we need to be mindful of our, of our town employees who are going to be charged with, you know, a lot of interaction down there, it sounds like. Um, just because of moving things and, and, and moving things back and what does that do? Um, it just, in my mind, it, it exponentially increases the, the risk to people, um, to, to our own workers and our own safety staff. Um, and I also think that, you know, we, we need to be looking at this from a, what is going to have the least risk to people's health? Um, and, and, and that is the lens that I want to focus on. And so in my mind, it means keeping them separate for now. Um, and hopefully, you know, going back, you know, I don't think we should be setting it based on, okay, we're going to do it this, this week is going to be at the, at SST and maybe, and maybe next week it'll be at Swayze Parkway. Like I think we say, okay, for 30 days, this is what it's going to be like. And then if And then if things dramat, you know, if we see a, a dip in the number of cases. If we see a dip in the number of deaths, then we can talk about what it means to move these, to move this thing back to where it should be. But we are not in normal times. So what is the, what is the least risk to people's health? And I think that that's the only lens that we can look, look at this through.
And then I'd also like to add that I don't know how this compares to, let's say, a supermarket, a Dick's Sporting Goods, any sort of, uh, commercial. Um, business where they can dictate whether or not you're encouraged, required to wear masks in their location. But that's something else to consider. If people are going to shop in the farmer's market, that's something that maybe, you know, we need to determine is a. Strong suggestion, recommendation. Live free or die, whatever you want to, you know, it, but I, I would rather have that conversation before. Than to deal with the consequences after of people who are split on it. So even if we're having it in a large outdoor location, we, we need to make sure that we are as clear as possible. Of what the expectations are for both the vendors and the patrons.
It seems to me that it's, it's, it appears right now safer and, and more seamless to have it split where, you know, the farmer's market right now is at SST. Swayze remains a Swayze. It sounds like, you know, the plan that Dorian presented to us is pretty thorough. Obviously she's going to continue to work with Mr. Murray. Um, as a board, we're also following, you know, our health officer's recommendation. Um, I, I just think for now that's the, the, the best way to go. I, I agree with both of you. Julie, you had your hand up, but it's down, but.
I think it was covered, but one thing that would be helpful, I think for all of us is to see a drawing of the layout on Swayze Parkway. And I, I don't want to get things too confusing, but I'm wondering if, if we nudge that around or have an opportunity that we can still do. Both aspects, but I know the temptation to socialize will be too great if we have a walking track and a shopping.
I really think that's true. I really think that's true. And I think that Dorian, correct me if I'm wrong, you're, you're ready to go, like you want to go starting Thursday, correct? This Thursday?
Y- yes, um, yes. Um, we do, we would like to start in immediately. Um, we do understand the town has some hesitancy and they still have to move the barriers. Um, we are required, the vendors, the guests and the members will be required to wear masks and gloves. And we will be providing, um, masks for anyone who wishes to, to collect them. And we will strongly encourage anyone who comes in without a mask to take one of our freebies so that they will be carrying a mask through the market. Um, James should have a picture of a layout of the tentative, um, stream. I'm sorry I didn't bring that with me and, and I wouldn't have ability to put it on the screen anyway. But, um, James does have all that information. Um, James Murray, the health inspector.
Thank you. So let's, let's take this in steps. I think first, um, I'll entertain a motion from the board to extend. Closing Swayze Parkway to vehicular traffic, uh, for the purpose of walking and exercising as we've done. Uh, a motion to extend that for another 30 days.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. The motion was from select woman round tree olive. The second was select woman Gilman. Madam Clerk?
Select woman Callan.
Yes.
Select woman around tree olive.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Clerk says aye.
Okay, now passes four zero. And then I would entertain a motion to. Relocate the farmer's market to the SST location, uh, for the next 30 days.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Select woman Callan.
Yes.
Select woman round tree olive.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
Clerk says aye.
Okay, now passes four zero. And Mr. Murray, you'll continue to work with, uh, with Dorian in the farmer's market?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dean, the hour is finally yours.
Okay, so I think, uh, the folks who are with us can go too, right? I think so, at this point, unless you want to say. Um, so in my COVID report, I, I just have a few things. One is, uh, there's a letter in the packet that is addressed to House Speaker Pelosi and Minority Leader McCarthy regarding, uh, local funding. And, uh, the hope was if the board can read that and just have consensus that it's okay to sign and send that along, that would be good. Um, that's come through the NHMA and just to stress the fact that. A lot of the funding that's come through so far has not necessarily been earmarked for cities and towns in a, in a meaningful way. Although I will also, so I think that letter is worth sending. So if you can look it over and if you have any concerns or questions, just let me know. Otherwise, um, we can get the board's sign off on it. Um, the other information I have on COVID. Uh, is really related more to just the report of listening to a lot of the meetings of the reopening task force, which you heard some about tonight. Also the Gopher, uh, those are very involved meetings and also the H, uh, the Homeland Security meetings, which I've been able to listen to as well. And, uh, I did want to break down the funding as much as I could in the CARES Act for the board to look at because that, that is a little bit. It, it's a little bit difficult to understand the 1.25 billion and sort of where it is all parsed out to. So there's a lot of detail in here, but even so, um, we're continuing to stay on top of that to try to understand the, the fiscal pieces of it. Because it's not, it's not necessarily easy to follow the dollars. And, um, there are a few different proposals that have been put out there about the uses of the money. So that's also worth, uh, taking a look at when you have a chance. Uh, just today, the governor announced, and it's on the, uh, Gopher page. There's actually a municipal and county payment section. Uh, and at the governor's press conference today, the news was that first responders would get, I think for full time, a $300 per week stipend. Uh, is what was announced and for part-time people, $150 per week. That's what the governor announced. It's not clear how that money will be allocated out. Um, we are having conversations right away because we really didn't know that was coming. It was, it was a, almost a surprise announcement at the three o'clock press conference today. So we're sorting through that information to try to figure out exactly what that means. Um, there is on the Gopher page, municipal and county payment to Exeter of 360 some odd thousand dollars. So it, again, it's a little unclear how that money is going to come to us. But we are going to keep our eye on it because one thing we've learned with the federal CARES Act money is that it shows up in our bank account fairly quickly. So I'll get some more information on that and hopefully have a follow-up report for the board on it. But it is on the Gopher website, uh, as we speak. And each town has been given an allocation and Exeter's is $360,000. So there's that. Um, there's also some information about the elections law, uh, 3.2 million dollar. There's a task force that's been put together to, um, allocate those dollars. So that information is in the packet. On, uh, and so forth. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention to the board is more of an internal matter. As the, as the, uh, COVID situation continues to unfold. Uh, we're beginning to hear, obviously with the stay, uh, stay at home order 2.0. We're beginning to have a little bit of discussion internally about how we might approach public access. And I think, you know, it's, it's very early in that process. And I think that we have done a good job leveraging the resources within our organization. Um, but we are taking input from people, we're listening and we're trying to put together some, uh, bullet points. That will help us get to that next step. But for right now, I mean, I think my, my message to the board would be, I think we've done a good job with what we've done. Um, and we're not looking to change anything, but, uh, it's also one of those discussions that we're having and we're sort of reviewing. Control measures within the building and things like that and just having those conversations informally. But for right now, we don't have a lot of service issues, um, that have come up. So I think we're in good shape for the, for the near term here. So, and I think that was it on COVID information from me.
Uh, one moment, Julie, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Um, I just wanted to, uh.
Julie, you're muted. Oh, there you go.
Hey, my, my thing is different than your thing. I just wanted to reiterate the, um, the letter that, uh, Mr. Dean's prepared for us to send to, uh, the Senate. Uh, that what we're looking for is money to actually replace, um, revenue. Right now, the money that's coming to the states does not replace revenue. It replaces the costs of COVID-19, uh, solutions and practices. Um, I was on a telephone town hall with Senators Shaheen and Hassan. And that, that was their goal in the last package that came out, that cares number three, but they're still working on getting it. Uh, for cares number four, so I'd like to have, ask everyone to please write to every other senator. At the Capitol and tell them we need this because our two know that we need this. Um, a lot, a lot, just like Mr. Dean said about, um. Things are being concentrated at a, a larger gathering, you know, cities, not towns and, um. And, uh, Mr. Bisson and the, you know, YMCA, but not towns because we're, you know, smaller and pay for ourselves. Um, the, we need to have people, we need to have bigger states or, or. States with denser population, remember not everybody's like them. So I, I please ask you to please write to our, our folks in the Capitol.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Dean? All right, thank you, Russ.
You're welcome.
Chief Woking, thank you again.
Oh, no problem. I just was going to add a quick thing to Russ, uh, he jogged my memory. The CARES Act has also asked us to, uh, supply a report on, uh, lost revenue through the CMS, the Center for Medicare Services. So we'll be, uh, submitting that, uh, probably by the end of the week with. Um, our run volume is down, our EMS calls are down and they've asked us to look at historical averages as compared to this year. So, um, so there is more money coming from the Medicare side as well. How, how be a small, much smaller than 360, but, uh, but I appreciate you, uh, your, your time tonight and have a great evening.
Thank you, chief.
And congratulations to the chief on his appointment, by the way, as well, as interim chief. First night. First night on the job here.
Uh, thank, thank you so much. Looking forward to many more and, uh, a discussion with all the board members. And obviously it's going to be hard to get us all together, but one-on-one. Feel free, I'm willing to come out and visit, or if you want to swing by the firehouse, uh, we'll have a, have a cup of coffee and, and talk about the future of the. The firehouse and the study and, and all, but, uh, I, I, again, I look forward to the interaction over the next couple of months, so.
Thank you, chief, and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Dean, on that note, um, is the final, uh, copy of the study complete?
Uh, I think the last, uh, marker was, um, I know the chief and dispatch were making a couple of changes to the draft. Or forwarding a couple of, uh, changes they would like to see in the draft. Uh, but we'll follow up this week and see if those have been incorporated.
Okay, because I know the board's anxious to see it.
Right.
When it's available.
Yes.
All right, moving on to regular business, um. We have tax abatements, veterans credits and exemptions. Julie, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay, I gotta scroll down again, so hold on. We'll probably go too fast and go right by.
I think there's only one or two.
Yeah, there's only a, um, all we have is a jeopardy tax and I moved to approve a jeopardy tax for map 55, lot 34, in the amount of $326.
So moved.
Motion in a second, uh, Madam Clerk for the roll call, please.
Uh, select woman Callan.
Aye.
Select woman round tree olive.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And the clerk says aye.
Okay, unanimous. Uh, we do not have any permits and approvals. Um, Mr. Dean, do you have anything to add in your town managers' report?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. One is that we're getting the committees back up online, uh, and up to speed on the Zoom meeting protocols. So they begin, so they can begin having meetings. So that, that's a good positive thing that we're seeing. Um, I know, so you'll see more and more of these Zoom meetings as, as we go. Uh, and Bob's done a great job with that. So I know the planning board has a meeting on the 14th of May. I think conservation is the 12th, housing committee is this Friday. So the, the various chairs are coming up to speed more and more on that. Um, we are reviewing the budgets, as I mentioned, for a presentation more on the 18th of May to talk more about that. Uh, we are working on the bond bank, uh, application for the library and the groundwater assessment. We have the 2019 audit going on with, in a, in the virtual environment. Um, the planning office received an application for a 3.5 megawatt solar farm on Powder Mill Road. So I thought you might be interested in hearing about that. And then, um. A lot of time is being taken up by the EPA permit comments. So that is something that we've been coordinating with member towns, I think, just in terms of. Two key elements of those comments, one is that the other communities around us, like, that are contributing non-point source runoff. Are really not part of this permitting process and yet the cap being put on the Great Bay that's proposed under the permit is. Does not include those communities. So it seems kind of counterintuitive to us. Based upon the requirements that they're putting in there. So that's one of the themes that we're talking about. And then just continuing to ask that the science be reviewed because again, this, this permit is very restrictive and potentially very costly. So we're going to keep working on that front. And. Our paving program is continuing and Powder Mill Road is, is paved and, uh, also Arbor and Parker Street area. And I think that was it.
Thank you, Julie.
Uh, I've totally forgotten what my question was, so never mind.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Dean. Select Board Committee reports, um. Has anyone met with their respective committees since we last met a week ago? Molly?
I did. Um, we met with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, um, and, you know, heard updates, sort of brainstormed about what could be best practices. Um, but really understanding that we're not making any decisions at this level. At the, at the committee level, um, and just wanting to be helpful and, and advising.
Lovey, did you have any committee meetings last week? Julie?
Uh, no, we've got some planned though. Uh, the HDC is, uh, meeting on the 21st and we'll be talking about the IOKA. Um, so there it is. Um, and then a couple of meetings at the, at the state house, we just started doing some meetings in our committees. And my, my committee was the Guinea pig and, uh, most of us were pros already. Thank you. I remember my question now. Um, is Bob like the host of every committee meeting we have?
Pretty much.
Seems that way.
Okay, so, so that's where our COVID-19 money goes. In his overtime.
I can send you guys all my bank details later.
Um, so I have a sustainability committee meeting tomorrow night, uh, so I'll be able to update you on that at our next meeting. And that will, uh, lead me to correspondence and a good segue. Um, we spoke at our last meeting, uh, Robin Tyner was reappointed as an alternate to the planning board. And, um, I had emailed her, um, you know, reminding her of, of town policy of not serving on more than two committees. Uh, so in our packet, um, Robin has, uh, decided to resign. From her, um, position in the Sustainability Advisory Committee, uh, concentrating her efforts and expertise more with the Energy Committee and the Planning Board. Um, I will say, paraphrase Robin's email, I, I've worked with Robin closely on the Sustainability Committee over the last year. And also worked with her while Article 31 was, um, was being drafted and ultimately, uh, uh, was, was voted for. Um, you know, uh, Robin is very well-versed in, uh, in sustainability and brought quite a bit to that committee. And I know that, uh, even though she's resigned from the committee, she will work, continue to do work with the town of Exeter. Um, to promote sustainability and she's an incredible advocate for the sustainability. So I, I thank her for all of her efforts over the last couple of years as, as they work towards, uh, establishing this committee. So, um, I think we need to have a motion to accept Robin's resignation.
So moved.
The motion is second, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Yes.
Selectwoman Roundtree, Roundtree Oliph. I almost made it through the meeting without
You did, you were so close.
Mr. Chair.
Aye.
And the clerk says aye. I need a glass of water.
The other piece of correspondence, Dawn spoke in public comment, so, and actually read her letter, so we've covered that. Our next meeting is May 18th, followed by June 1st, I believe. And if there are no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in the second, Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Selectwoman Roundtree Oliph.
Aye, aye.